The trip. Looks like you got sun. You got sun.
Get this, hey, John. John. Go. Go, go get this.
What's that? The worst, not the worst, just exhausting. I kept thinking, I'm gonna give you a little bit of time all week to prepare for city council. No. Every time I'm like, okay. So you'll see that I finally printed that thing on.
Uh? What?
Yes. Oh, I don't mind. Sound it hard. Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, we got.
Don't you hold it while you take back there?
Calling to order, the Perrone City Council meeting for July thirty first, twenty twenty five. It is five thirty P M. Thank you for being here this evening. It's nice to see people here engaged in the business of the city. It's great to have you. We are going to start with an opening ceremony and that is going to be given to us by Tom Zaleski. He'll lead us in a prayer and then the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're very grateful to be able to participate in our local government. So thankful for the process that we have to elect officials and to be able to have them accountable and grateful for the officials we have. Father, we are thankful for the community that we live in and ask thee to please help us to be good citizens. We are very grateful also for this heritage that we have, those that have gone before that have sacrificed much, that we can have what we do. We pray for moisture for our area and we pray humbly for unity in our community. We ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 Please follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do have some changes to the agenda. So item three, first of all, do we have any conflicts or personal interest in any of the agenda items?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
No. But mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we move item number eight to the work agenda from the action.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion on the table and a second. Do we have any discussion about that?
I just heard enough discussion that there is uncertainty not, you know, unified, you know, decision in this, so I think we need to discuss it some more.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, so that will be moved from action to work. And then the other two items are the, um...
Mayor.
The other two items are the aeration on the Meeks Pond. There have been a lot of ideas that have been coming up and we've been discussing some options for that. And so we're gonna take another two weeks to kind of vet those and also find out a little bit more about cost and what would be best for the, you know, the body of water, the wildlife, as well as the flora that's there in the pond. So we need to table that and we also need to table item number fifteen, which is the procurement policy discussion. A lot of hours have gone into that. It needs more time for us to be able to actually talk about that this evening. So I need a motion to approve tabling those two items.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to table item twelve and fifteen of the work agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now we'll move to public comments and these, this is your time to come and speak. You can state your name and you've got three minutes to discuss anything that you would like to, your concerns, observations, or anything else that you'd like to come to the council with and to the public with.
Hi, everyone. My name's Janelle Zajak. I think you're all doing a great job. And what I would like to say is, the motion that you just passed should have said item fifteen. Or, no, I'm sorry, fourteen, procurement policy discussion, not item fifteen.
It is number fifteen.
Okay, why are we looking at a different number?
(laughing).
It was like the one I have. Point of order, one way or another. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
There was an amended agenda yesterday and that's what, we were looking at the old agenda. Did that what happen?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So are we looking at the amended one here that's printed?
The printed one on our.
Printed one's cracking.
Okay.
She's getting it up online.
All right, yes, sir.
Some of you know me, some of you don't. My name's Anthony Guiling. I live at eighty-four South, one hundred West. I have been a resident here since thirty-five, thirty-six years ago. I believe the town manager then was Jim Burns.
I've heard of him.
Right, yes. So I've been here a little while and I would just like to say that our town has outgrown the current location of the post office. The traffic, the congestion, the tra- the, it's, it's a mess and I never see any law enforcement there, zero. The young men ride up and down, one hundred west, one hundred south, fifty, seventy miles an hour. I've contacted Jed Townsend on Saturday. He did zero. I contacted another policeman several weeks ago. He did at least give me the form to fill out, which I did not. It's a public safety hazard and I feel that my safety, the safety of my grandchildren and all the other citizens is only in our hands because the police force is not being led adequately and it needs to change. And there needs to be some step up in enforcement and my suggestion is either do your job or find a new job, okay? So, but the post office, it, it's outgrown its location. I asked Jim Burns back then why a commercial business is in a residential area and it goes a long ways back to the post office and how it is mismanaged. We all know that. It's in serious, serious debt and I think that's an old relic of its era gone by, how they leased these buildings. So I remember right before the post office moved, it was where the Century Link building is now, if I'm not wrong, correct? It was right there by...
This east of it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that was a little before when I moved here in nineteen eighty-five. So, but I, I would say this to the police department here. I feel that our town was safer ten years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. The police chiefs then listened to you, they engaged you, and they did something. And that's important. If you're not an effective leader, you do not have an effective department. And I would like to say one more thing. I appreciate all the good town employees and department heads and the job they do for our town, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. And we can discuss the post office. We've been talking about it for quite some time and have been looking at some options. I've interviewed with the, I call it interview, I asked the postmaster a lot of questions about available boxes and we've been looking for alternative locations, so don't think that that wasn't heard. Thank you. All right, any, so nobody else is coming up, so we can now move to the consent agenda. And this is the part of the agenda that's administrative and usually approved with one, with one motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items five through six.
And it's the approval of the city council meeting minutes and the approval of the warrant register for July thirty first, twenty twenty five. And the date is missing on the meeting minutes.
No.
Okay, I just didn't wanna not notice that.
Okay, I'll move to approve items five through six with those corrections.
I'll second the motion.
Should we leave that just until, should we move that to, I'm just discussing with the council openly, or do we wanna add the minutes to that and move it to the next agenda just so it's on the formal record or are we okay to approve it as it is? Okay. Yes, yeah, okay. All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Moving now into our action agenda, number seven is off-premise beer license and we have the local consent for the Maverick store, seven ninety. It's the new store and the Family Dollar and the Pizza Barn.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the off-premise beer licenses for Maverick, for the new store Maverick, number nine seventy, Family Dollar and the Pizza Barn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now moving to item number eight. And that got moved, so we'll go to item number nine. So in reviewing the M O U for the America two fifty, we wanted to bring it to the council and basically it's that we met the requirements to receive a stipend of fifteen hundred dollars to help us with patriotic celebrations from July twenty twenty five to July twenty twenty six. The requirements for that were a signature on an agreement to properly use the official America two fifty logo as well as commit to some events that would be patriotic. Fortunately Perrone does patriotic events and that's something we've done historically, so very easily we met the criteria. We also needed to form the America two fifty committee, which we did do in council meeting and that committee was in a public meeting and we have that documented as well. So this is just an approval to say we've met the requirements and that we are willing to receive that fifteen hundred dollars stipend to use as we choose during this celebration time.
I move to approve, review, what is it? Review and approve America two fifty M O U. Aren't we a, what do you mean by move, review and approve?
So I just reviewed what we needed to do and then you would just approve that we...
We're approving the M O U, the memorandum of understanding that says that we'll do that and they'll give us fifteen hundred bucks.
Okay, I move to approve America two fifty M O U.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item number ten is the approval of the Jones and DeMille scope of work and fee for the E D A grant application. This is for the airport project and our city manager, Dan Jessen, will discuss that with us.
Yes, so we have already approved that we are applying for this grant. The grant is through the E D A and to build the airport loop road and to do upgraded utilities, which, which we've been talking about for some time. We, in a prior meeting, a couple meetings back, we awarded the contract to do the preliminary work to Jones and DeMille based on the R F P. The R F P is based on qualifications, isn't based on, on a bidding. We now have Jones and DeMille's estimate to do that work and that's the scope of work and their fee. And that needs to be also approved. We need to recognize that what we're essentially doing is, is they will be designing the preliminary engineering report, which you have to have a certain amount of engineering done in order to apply for the grant, plus they'll assist us in applying for the grant. Without it, we can't even apply for the grant. If we get the grant, it's funded. We've confirmed that they will fund the expenses to do this. If we don't get the grant, we are at risk that, that we will have spent money in doing this design that ultimately we don't have funding yet. So like I said, that we got their estimate, not their estimate, their scope of work and fee, which we need to sign, but it's gonna cost thirty thousand dollars and hopefully we'll get the grant and it'll pay for it. Now, as far as what are the chances of getting the grant, we met with Department of Commerce, E D A last week, had a follow-up with them now that we've hired Jones and DeMille and, and got kind of a little bit down to brass tacks. The, this is now the second person at E D A we were working with, we were handed off, but also has the same impression that literally what we're doing is almost custom fit for what this grant is for and they do have funding. And so it, I'm not saying it's a guaranteed thing, but the, the chances that we will get funded look extremely high. Obviously we have to apply. This is in line, not to get political, but this is in line with the current administration and the current director of the department. This is one of their pet projects that they are extremely proud of and really wanna get this money out because it's about jobs, it's about infrastructure. So the current administration and the current director of the Department of Commerce feels really strongly about this and we're bringing in an application that looks like it was custom tailored for this grant. So we feel really positive about it. The, the one issue we're trying to work through is a specific easement, whether we can get, whether we have to have fee title or not, and we're working through that, should have that resolved in the next, hopefully thirty days. So the grant, we will be applying for approximately seven million dollars. It'll take some time to apply. Once the application gets in, it can take up to six months, but it literally goes right to the director's desk after it goes through the steps to get there. The director thinks about it for some time and then makes the award after getting the sign off. So if this was right before a presidential election, I would say it's somewhat risky because the next cabinet may not feel so strongly about this project, but this one does and this will be approved hopefully in around, you know, December, I don't wanna throw a, a month on it, in twenty twenty six. So everything looks really good. I feel comfortable with it, but at the end of the day, you guys are the ones that have to allocate thirty thousand dollars to pay Jones and DeMille to do the work.
So their fee is thirty thousand dollars?
It's split up. It's ten thousand plus thirty thou- plus twenty thousand. I, I forwarded...
A significant component of it is the environmental and cultural studies that have to be done anyway and so that's something we couldn't do ourselves. And then the other part is the, completing the, the grant process. And I thought that was important to point out to the council because, you know, it's like, how does, how do we come up with that number, you know? But when you realize that a, a portion of that is just the required environmental and cultural studies that have to be done out there.
So again, what's the acronym, E D A? What's what?
E D A, the ac-
Economic Development Agency.
Economic, okay.
So planning services, estimated fee of ten thousand dollars, that's for all of their engineering work. Environmental services is twenty thousand. Environmental, you think environment, but it's, they have to do cultural survey, they have to look at any, any impact where this utility can go. Anytime you touch federal dollars, there's all these hoops you gotta jump through, you have to jump through a bunch of hoops even just to apply.
Mm-hmm.
And that's this. Now, the, the good thing is, is once we've done that, then we, even if we get funding somewhere else, we will have already done this work, so.
Is Jones and DeMille helping us apply for this grant?
They are. And one of the reasons why we felt strongly about awarding this to Jones and DeMille is they literally did this exact same grant to do industrial park infrastructure for Richfield City. They wrote the grant, they're familiar with E D A and they're, they're kind of what they like to see. They, they received that award and also managed the construction. So they've literally done exactly what we're doing before. So we feel like we had a good, good, good partner and the right engineer there and everything so far has, has looked, looks really good, so.
Does this have anything to do with the inland port?
This doesn't. It, other than this will get our, get our road improved and utilities out to the area that we would like to have the inland port participation with.
Okay.
If we're, if we're gonna try to incentivize a, you know, an industrial manufacturing type person to build out by the airport, like the building that everybody sees out there going now, if you have additional or, or utilities that can actually support that and a road that can support that, it's, you're much more likely to get somebody in rather than they have to build seven million dollars worth of infrastructure to start their project, so.
I'll make a motion to, of the approval of Jones and DeMille's scope of work and fee for the E D A grant application.
I'll second it.
All those in...
Oh, can I have a discussion just really quick? When do we, so are we gonna have to upfront this money to start out with and then we get the grant?
Yeah.
So how are we doing that?
We will have to...
Where, where will we do that?
We will have to appropriate the money and, and do it with a budget amendment.
Okay.
Um, if we get the grant, the grant will then reimburse us back.
Right, okay.
Good, really good question, thank you.
That's how the mechanics of that work.
Is there any other discussion? We have a motion in a second, but we can certainly talk more about this. All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. We'll move now to the work agenda. We got here faster than I thought we would (laugh) and we have Tom Zaleski. I don't know if Liz is gonna come up with him. Yes, sir. Oh, I guess we could put that as number ten, but I mean, I guess, I don't even know how we number it.
We didn't say where we were gonna put it in the action agenda.
Um... Is it okay if we do this update? Cause they're not gonna be long? Okay, all right, thank you. He even debated being in public comment. He said he wouldn't be much longer than three minutes. (laugh)
See if I can read my notes. It is a great honor to represent the hundreds of people that came together to make Old Rock Church Days a success. Yes, we raised money, but equally in, in importance is the unity of purpose that brought so many together. Quoting from one of our outstanding leaders in the endeavor, quote, "Old Rock Church Days would have been a great success even if we hadn't raised any money." The feeling Friday evening and Saturday was so special. The atmosphere was one of love for our community and unity in preserving our heritage. Karen Miller, Karen Miller and I met earlier in the week with our mayor and our city manager. We are thrilled to find that we have enough money to raise the roof, so to speak. With the money raised this year and money from a grant, we are in position to pay for a new roof. A contract has already been sent out by our excellent city staff. Three bids have come in. We also have enough money to tie the roof to the building. The bottom line on our fundraising is that we have raised forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and with the matching money from the Dixie and Levitt Foundation, we then have raised this year about eighty-five thousand dollars. What a community effort. Perrone, what a great place to call home. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but we could, you could tell the community that you are in need of people participating for next year. We talked about that at the end of our meeting, that this is a lot to carry for those that have now for the last two years and three years. I was, I was debating, I was like, two or three years? For three years and just a tremendous, tremendous effort and you're looking for a succession plan. So we wanna put that out to our community that if this is something that you wanna get involved in and that you love, you've got great mentors who have really carried this, but would love to bring you in and pass the baton, but not, but not leave the race. And so, do you have anything to add to that?
Amen.
(laugh)
Thank you.
I wanted to ask one question about the rafter run of the building and the deflection over the years of its sagging. Usually it's the time of installing the roof or at that time, that's the appropriate moment in time to reinforce that, to double him, to do David, Woodno, Harris, L V L, whatever. But if you really want to connect the roof to the building, you're going to have to address that sagging in the rafter run, which I suspect that building is two by fours, that run.
No.
It's the most quarter around here, but it could be a two by six, which is very inadequate for that span.
If you'd like to see kind of the way the building's put together, we have engineer drawings on that roof as well as the tie-in plan and we would love to step you through. We also have a lot of photos and things that show the beams and it's an architectural marvel, it really is, the way it was put together, the craftsmanship and, and how it's standing in the state that it's in still after all these years, but thank you if you're concerned about that.
But mayor, we have architects that have been involved in this.
Yeah, that's why we need to show you what we've, what we've learned along the way. It's been a big project to get to this point.
And we would take you in the attic if you would like.
Well, no, I've, I've just, every building I've ever built here in town has those deflection issues and just because you hired an engineer architect doesn't mean that they've actually been up there and put a string line on each of those rafters to see what that sag is and how we get it out properly.
I'll guarantee you they're not two by fours.
(laugh) All right, thank you, thank you, Tom. Appreciate you.
And I was with the engineers in the attic. I took them in and they, they crawled around and measured and did an incredible, incredible study.
There's substantial timbers up in there.
Thank you. All right, so now we will move to the item that we moved from action, which is the discussion of the Prime West Development L C annexation agreement and the final language.
Okay, so I have, I have the information that Dallas has sent and I can bring that up. I've also prepared a, a quick summary to explain the original language, just to kind of bullet pointed and some, the counter proposals to kind of kick off the discussion. I'm gonna switch the thing, Kelly. So we have, we have the, the original agreement and, and it get, you know, it's quite a bit of legalese as this was discussed and I think we were in agreement with the applicant on really everything except for roads and access requirements. So we had, we had what was originally there and then we had a counter proposal by the applicant. I'm just gonna summarize what that is, so... I'm just gonna summarize what that is, so the public can understand what our conversation is. I think the council has been very involved and is probably more up to speed on this issue and some of the details than, than, than a lot of issues that we, we deal with, where we kind of get into it in the meeting. There's been a lot of, a lot of phone calls, a lot of site visits, so, and, and who knows what all the different council thinks, but I'll sum it up for the public. In the original language, um, the, the requirements that were in the annexation agreement said that with the first subdivision application, um, development would improve. I put "improve" in quotes, because as Dallas pointed out, what does "improve" mean? Um, improve two hundred north, um, from the, from the new annexed property to six hundred west, um, including curb gutter and sidewalk on one side, was, was pretty much what it said. And, um, and then also requirements with the first subdivision is they would be required to connect a second access for ingress egress from another location, but it needed to comply with the transportation master plan. So, that's the way it was originally written. Um, in our last meeting, we dove into that in quite some detail and, um, pretty much understood that we weren't on the same page with the applicant, and, um, the council was gonna think through it, do some investigation. The applicant was going to look at it, and, um, we received a counter proposal of language. I'm not gonna read the paragraphs of language, I'm just gonna summarize, and if I, if I capture this wrong, Dallas will correct me. Um, the counter proposal is that requirements with the first subdivision is that they will provide, this is in quotes, 'cause it's from the thing, provide one improved road access for ingress egress. Most likely, however, it isn't specified, um, there had been talking about, um, dedicating twelve hundred west. That is the road that goes through the RV park. Um, it doesn't quite make it to the property, but it makes it most of the way. Um, there was some, some debate as to whether that road was, is up to city standard or not for it to be dedicated. Um, but in the agreement, there wouldn't be any, um, improvements to that, other than to ensure that it is twenty-six foot wide asphalt, and then it would be extended to the south boundary. But it wouldn't necessarily have to be that twelve hundred west, in the, in the language, it just says that they will provide one improved road access. Um, they would be allowed to build eighty lots before a second access is required. Um, and I put in, in parentheses, um, that, that that isn't, um, that doesn't meet fire code, which says that if you only have one ingress egress, this is international fire code, which our code recognizes. It says that you can do up to thirty homes with one access. So, I'm just clarif, just clarifying that, that is not something that they put, that's just some, some words that I'm adding in there. That's the requirements that would be required for the first subdivision, and upon subdivision of the eighty-first lot, or application for the eighty-first lot, they would put a second access in at, at their option to the minimum standard of existing road width, street section, no curb detail, eight nine, which is twenty-six feet of asphalt with no curb gutter and sidewalk on the off-site portion. The applicant has made it clear that they intend to do curb gutter and sidewalk on all areas within the subdivision. They're just talking about the off-site stuff. If that access is two hundred north, that second access, then they propose that they would put in a four-foot wide meandering asphalt trail and improve that road to twenty-six foot wide, um, up to the west side of, of Sky Ranch. Um, there's actually two subdivisions where Sky Ranch is. Um, the portion we're talking about is actually right where the existing curb gutter and sidewalk, or sidewalk stops. That is the west edge of what they call Sky Ranch Unit Two. So, the proposal is, is that if two hundred north is their second access, they'll put a meandering trail and make sure the road is at least twenty-six foot wide. If the second access is not two hundred north, then they will not be required to upgrade two hundred north. So, that's what was in the counter proposal, did I represent that accurately?
Yep.
Okay, that's where we're at. Hmm. Do you want me to bring up your map? Do you have anything you wanna add before they talk and deliberate and ask questions?
Yeah, so I, I guess I'll just start with, with the, kind of the thought process on, on our counter proposal. So, um, the first, the first part was coming to the eighty lots is what had been approved on, um, the previous annexation. Um, and so, we carried that forward. Dan's correct in, um, the international fire code referencing the thirty lots off the single access. Um, there is some, some latitude that's given to local fire, um, and generally in Iron County, um, Cedar City, Enic, um, they've taken that latitude and pushed it to eighty units. Um, there's a thought process that that thirty units, or the thirty, thirty residences off of a single access is for more, um, city, so in rural communities, that's where I, I think it's kind of broadly been interpreted and expanded upon over the thirty. Um, and so, where there's a basis in Cedar City and Enic and some of the others, um, and then it had been adopted with the, the AJM annexation, that's how we got to that number.
And just, just for record, the, the AJM annexation, um, has an, another emergency ingress egress, that gravel road alongside the south side of the gravel pit, which was always in the back of our minds as we were talking about that. So, effectively, there's two access points on day one, it's just one of them isn't dedicated. It is in, it is within the control of the city and county. In other words, that road can't be closed. It is gravel, and it's not a great road, but in a pinch, a fire truck could definitely access that. So, that's, that's the difference, is all I was getting at, so.
Okay. Um, and then can we flip back to the summary, Dan?
Yeah.
So, and then, um, and then after doing some more research from our last, from our last meeting, so, um, I went through the city's transportation master plan, and they have that detail A nine. Um, I think one of the things that we kind of briefly discussed, and maybe we need to rehash, was the differences from, um, trying to enforce an off-site improvement on this project when you required one on, on the previous annexation. Um, the difference in my mind between the two is that on the AJM, we were talking about city property on two hundred, and then we were also talking about the cemetery property on City View Drive. And so, where the city does not currently have transportation master plan or impact fees, that they generate money to make improvements. In my mind, I was saying that the city doesn't really have a mechanism to generate impact fees to then put in road improvements along their frontage, and so that was negotiated with that developer, and he agreed to it. On this one, um, everything is private along two hundred, and so, the way that we arrived at our counter proposal was, um, maybe if we could flip back to the other one now, Dan, I just needed to read that, read that one again. So-
Yes?
Yeah, so, if you look up the top, and maybe, so I cropped the detail, so the existing, the A nine detail is the one that's on there, so it's basically twenty-six feet asphalt, and then you see where they have concrete sidewalks on either side, where, and it says where applicable. Um, our proposal, based on what the city has on a different detail for a multi-use path, is the three inches of asphalt and six inches, or four inches of untreated base. So, I was looking at it from the standpoint of saying, hey, this is an off-site improvement, this is all along private property. Um, there's already subdivided lands between, on the south side of two hundred from our boundary to Sky Ranch, and so, there's really no mechanism for the city to enforce any kind of bringing up to standards along that south side. And so, that's where we had proposed the red line, which is about thirteen hundred and fifty feet. Um, in our previous council meeting, we had talked about going to the west line of levels, so I put it in blue there, um, with a dimension, just so we could see what those were. But the entire north side of two hundred north, and then that three hundred and sixty feet, is all undeveloped land. And so, I was thinking that with that being undeveloped, when it does develop, the city has a mechanism to trigger improvements. The other thing with looking at two hundred north in, in greater detail is that along the south side of that, the road appears to be fully dedicated from the quarter section line. So, there's the quarter section line, which is maybe not the center line of asphalt, but there's a thirty-three foot dedication along the Sky Ranch, and then there's dimensions to the north to the fence line of anywhere from twenty-three to twenty-five, twenty-seven feet. So, with the city's master plan road widths, um, and this one I think is a local, so it'd be a sixty-foot right-of-way, there's additional right-of-way that needs to be dedicated along the north side. So, for us to have to do anything on the north side with existing improvements being the power lines, and then trying to secure additional right-of-ways is a, a pretty big burden. So, then we said if we're gonna do something, we gotta do it on the south side. Um, there are power lines, there's culverts, there's improvements. That's why we introduced the meandering portion, so that we could have some kind of pedestrian travel path along there. Um, and where the city has the A nine detail, that felt like an appropriate, um, thing to negotiate with the city to say, you have a detail that has twenty-six feet asphalt, you have sidewalks, and it says where applicable. Um, the, the discussion from the last meeting made it seem that pedestrian traffic along two hundred, two hundred north was important, and so, this is one where we could say, I don't know what the road is width-wise. If it's not twenty-six feet, that's, that's also something that's in the fire code. So, that, in my mind, is something the city should require, that we have at least twenty feet at, twenty-six feet asphalt. Um, and then we try to put the four-foot trail in, and we meander it around power poles and improvements, and try to get a pedestrian path in there. Um, so that was, that was kind of the portion that we did with the two hundred north improvement. Um, and then, as far as the number of accesses required and whether it triggers two hundred north, last meeting, we also talked about some ground disturbances that had happened on the north end, and there's additional annexations being discussed, and depending on our timeline and the potential other timelines, two hundred north could get improved. Um, but I was the design engineer on the RV park. When we designed that, we left a sixty-foot, we did a, we actually did a lot line adjustment with the folks to the east. And so, we have, it was permitted as a private driveway, but we had notes on the plan that said it's a future sixty-foot wide road. We constructed it with soils and testing and all that, and it's, I think it's twenty-four feet as designed. Um, three inches of asphalt, eight inches of pit run, eight inches of road base. So, it's, it's built to, um, to a certain traffic index that would be equivalent for a, for a city. But, um, similar to this discussion on two hundred north, it obviously makes sense for us to tie onto that, but we're, we have to talk to adjacent landowners, and they have to agree to dedicate and negotiate that, that happening. But, um, this exhibit, we just, I showed, if you could just pan up a little bit, Dan. We just, I put that cross hatch in there just to say, this could potentially be a phase one, that's five or six acres. Um, from discussions with, uh, the folks involved in this annexation, it seems like the, their preference would be to develop the medium density first, and so, that's why we've just hashed it, but you can see that that's a, that's a pretty short run. Uh, I believe that the water is also, um, the water situation as far as main sizes and stuff are not great on those existing subdivisions. We had put an eight inch in twelve hundred west, and so, that's the logical spot to start for water, 'cause that's the shortest run, and then we have sewer over off the west side of the RV park. So, from a utility connection standpoint, um, starting somewhere in the southwest corner makes the most sense. And so, from the initial proposal that council provided, if we were to start here, um, and have to improve to two hundred, then we're putting in a lot of off, onsite, but outside of our phase. So, there's just a lot of improvement. So, there's a lot that still has to be worked out as far as can we get that road dedicated with the additional landowners? Can we really truly utilize this as a first access? Um, and so, that's kind of why I took a tiered approach, to say, we definitely need one. At a certain threshold, we definitely need a second one. In my mind, just based on experience with other cities and towns and counties and the fire code, generally, once you get to two access points, then you're good. There's no, at five hundred, you need a third, at a thousand, you need a fourth. Um, and so, that's why I was just trying to delineate. If we get to two accesses and we can satisfy the improvements and have an ingress egress, um, then we don't need to concern ourselves with off-site improvements on, on additional roads.
Couple of questions on twelve hundred west. It states, can you get to that other page, uh, Dan?
What, the summary?
Yeah, the summary.
No, these are my words, but yeah.
Oh, no, they're words up here. It, no words, no, no, just the other page.
The summary?
That one, right there.
Yep.
Stop. Um, it says, um, "No improvements other than the twenty-six wide asphalt to extend to the south boundary to annex property." So, that whole twelve hundred, you just wanna put in a twelve, a twenty-six foot with no, so we're gonna get back to the old, good old days of no curb and gutter? Isn't it in our code that we have to have curb and gutter and sidewalks?
So, the whole, the whole debate here, let me just ins, insert is, um, onsite improvements versus off-site improvements.
Well, they need that road to get to their, their property.
But I'm saying, are, it's, it's the subdivision code that would require curb gutter and sidewalk.
Okay.
Um, and the subdivision code wouldn't necessarily say what has to happen on an off-site improvement. The fire code would, so at a bare minimum, they would need an access with twenty-six five, twenty-six foot wide asphalt. But it wouldn't necessarily say curb gutter and sidewalk. So-
Oh.
In order to, to require something like that, would have to be done through the annexation agreement, or they would have to just volunteer to do it at the time they wanted to build if, if it's not in here. Or it wouldn't go in, you know, whichever way that is.
And so, the, the thought process on that is just that onsite is dictated by the subdivision ordinance. When you go offsite, then you're looking at hitting minimum, minimum thresholds that meet fire codes. But a, again, just to contrast this with the previous annexation, that is, the, all of that frontage is along private property, and so, whether it's the next phase of the RV park, or there's development on the other frontages, the city has a mechanism that when those develop, they would get fully built out to the city's requirements along that frontage. So, we're saying, hey, we're gonna develop everything, curb gutter and sidewalk within the annexation boundary as required by the subdivision ordinance, but when we start getting offsite and we're along other people's frontage and other private property, we need to develop to the minimum standard to, to, uh, meet the fire code.
So, then you're saying if you do that on the, excuse me, on the twelve hundred west as your first access, when you have some, some homes built, you'd have kids coming down twelve hundred to Holyoke? Is that would be your main access to the property, correct?
As far as pedestrian traffic?
Yes.
Yeah, so if that was our first access and someone wanted to walk to one forty-three, then they would-
That doesn't sound very safe to me for the kids. How you, how are we gonna protect the kids driving, riding their bikes or walking on Holyoke?
Or even going down twelve hundred west. Twelve hundred west would be an issue. If we add one for thirty homes, and like I said in, in previous meetings, we're in Utah, so thirty homes and three kids per home, that's ninety kids walking down first phase, and there's no access. I mean, they're walking in the dirt next to the asphalt.
Isn't, isn't that detail A nine pretty representative of what is currently in Perwin?
Yeah, but we wanna move forward in Perwin.
Okay.
Not backwards. We, we, we can't have roads going in and out of subdivisions with dirt. That's twenty years ago, thirty years ago, we're talking about the post office, let's just talk about safety for the kids. Um, we need to worry about, yes, developing this property, but also about the residents that'll be living in that property, not just for the almighty buck.
Can we go back to those summaries, Dan, that you put together? Yeah. So, oh- So, oh, scroll up, please, upon this, okay. It says if the, if the second access is not two-hundred North, then that will never be required to upgrade two-hundred North. So you're saying you're going for some other second access, maybe that, what do you call it, frontage road or something? And so if you do that, you're never going to improve two-hundred North.
That, yeah, that would, as, as proposed, that's correct, yeah. There is, I think there's four master planned roads through this project, and there's the ability to potentially tie on to other roads to the south, not using two-hundred North.
But what access would you have into the, what we call the prop, the city proper right now, other than down to Holyoke Lane, two-hundred south?
So we would, so at some point, we would tie into two-hundred North. But as far as, so we come through with a subdivision application, we build to the requirements the city has within the subdivision ordinance. I'm, I'm not an expert on the city's ordinances, but it'd be very uncharacteristic for a city ordinance to say, hey, you're doing a subdivision, you have to do all these other off-site improvements. And so-
If, if that helps define the issues, and hopefully this doesn't belabor it, but focuses us, I think the issues are, you make a very valid point, that the city's calling upon you to consider making improvements outside of the subdivision. And normally, body politics can't do that, no more than can they ask you to put a roof on the church. But they can delay the annexation or the approval of the subdivision if the city finds that it is not within the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, and in this case, as I understand it, children, ingress egress going to and from school, if it creates a hazard, a nuisance, a propensity for putting children at risk. And so the city's response is, you know what, Dallas, you're right. We can't make you build a road this wide, this high, this long, curb and gutter. But until the city, and I, I think we just entered into, Dan, an interlocal agreement with ENIC, and we've got a chipper, and we're moving along faster and better. But the city could say, I'm sorry, we're not there yet. We need to make these off-site improvements before we ask you to come to us and do what you're required to do within the ordinances and within the subdivision. And so I think the city would be able to say, and I think this is the issue, we don't think it's safe. If you're not gonna do it, then we'll do it, you're right, but not tomorrow, not next week, and it may take some time. So when those improvements are made and our children are protected, then we'll invite you to come back, and I think you'll pass with flying colors. So I think that's the equities that both sides are, are debating. To, in a nutshell, you're saying, well, I don't have to pay for that. And the city's saying, well, I know, but we want you to, because we're not prepared for that right now. And you can say, we don't want to, and they can say, sorry, we're not ready yet.
And I would just add to that, I, cities don't, we don't build hotels, we don't build houses, we don't build subdivisions. We rarely build roads. We do the darnedest that we can with limited gas tax to maintain roads that are built. To the, to the extent that there will be future building, usually cities build out in contiguous fashion, because the, the infrastructure is built by development as it goes. And if you ever have development that leapfrogs ahead, then you end up with these gaps. And in this case, on two-hundred North, it wasn't that, that it leapfrogged ahead, it's just that it was built in the sixties, seventies, eighties, and there wasn't a lot of improvements required. When you, when you talk about the other, you know, still two-hundred North does have building yet to go on the north side, and if they came in, then that would be built. So in the meantime, where this is effectively leapfrogging, if you will, sidewalks or something like that, what is a fair requirement? Which I think this is the, the whole point of the conversation, but I just wanted to add that. We don't, even though we have a chipper with, with ENIC, we're not gonna get in and build that, build a frontage road. We'd have to be pretty desperate, and we're gonna have to grant money, and we're gonna try to see if we can get partners. Generally speaking, development pays for itself. What is the level of exaction that is fair on an, on a subdivision, once it's already in the city? It's very clearly defined.
Point of information, Dan. Is any of that area on the north side of two-hundred North in the city limits at this time?
Almost all of it.
No, I mean, I mean, doesn't have to be annexed in? I mean, is it in the city limits?
So I have zoomed in on the map here. This portion right here is not yet annexed.
Right, okay.
Parcels right here are not yet annexed on the north. This home is annexed, and then this large property where there's been disturbance, there's Little Farm, Mr. Harris.
Mine's annexed.
Owns right here, those are annexed in, but this other portion is not.
Okay, so that is annexed in on the south, north side.
Majority of this is, but not all of it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think, because I was curious whether that actually had been annexed in.
Yeah.
And let me ask a question too on two-hundred North. From Sky West West on the south side.
Yep.
Is that a dedicated street?
It is.
For the south half.
For the south half, yeah.
South half, which, which might not necessarily be the center line of the asphalt. But from the maps that I've seen, there's a quarter section line that runs down through there, and then there's a thirty-three foot dedication on the south side of that. So that indicates to me that the south side is dedicated. Then, and everything north of that to the fence line would be probably considered prescriptive right-of-way.
So, so then if you-
If you look at the parcel viewer, and you can never trust the parcel viewer, it appears that there's almost the entire width there. But we go off surveys when we're doing this stuff, not parcel viewer.
So if we did do the south side of two-hundred North, you would have to do the curb and gutter, which would probably, would that be a four-foot or a five-foot walk?
Um, you know, so this, this, it, it's very easy to tell you what's inside a, a standard subdivision on our typical section. And I do want to bring up the, the, well, I guess it's on, it's on, hang on. Let me bring up the actual entire typical sections, not just that one. Because it'll, it'll illustrate my point. We have different typical sections in, on different roads. If there's on-street parking, if there is no on-street parking, that, that's different types of subdivision. We have typical sections for, a local on-street typical section in a standard subdivision is right here. It's forty-two feet of pavement, you have two eleven-foot travel lanes, two ten-foot shoulders where cars can park, the curb and gutter, which is approximately twelve inches, eighteen inches, and then a five-foot sidewalk. And then one foot to the property line.
I see.
That's a typical section inside a new subdivision.
And so that's what we would build entirely inside of the annexed property.
When we-
Every single road that's in the annexed property is gonna be built to that section.
When we had this done recently, as we updated our transportation master plan, we also had them prepare a diagram which showed this. And that's what, that's what we refer to in the language where it says A-nine.
Right.
A-nine is because we have a bunch of random right-of-ways. One-hundred East is a hundred and ten foot wide, has some curb, has some sidewalks in it, no curb and gutter. We have a lot of sections, you know, Brigham Young designed this, the streets at a hundred foot wide. That's very, 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 very wide for local roads. So that's why it says right-of-way, that width varies. And that's why there's also not a width on the sidewalk, because we needed a typical section that if somebody was to come and build in the middle of town by meets and bounds, it's not even in a subdivision, and we needed a typical section that an engineer could look at. We needed something to point to. This isn't something that we would permit inside a new subdivision. But to Dallas's point, this is off-site improvements in front of an already-built portion of town, therefore, in their argument, the most appropriate typical section to use. And therefore, the, the sidewalk doesn't say how wide. But it does say concrete, and they're proposing asphalt, anyways. At this point, we're negotiating on that. We're not, we're not, we're not saying it has to be this, because we're not in this space of, of that right now. We're talking about safety and whether, back to Scott's point, if they want to build today, it isn't ready for that. If we feel like that's a top priority before we allow an annexation or not. Hey, Scott, your haircut looks good, just had to say that.
Dan, can we just go digress maybe from this and go back? Is the water been met, the water requirement?
Water requirements are per code. Meaning, at a minimum, they have to bring us a half acre foot per parcel. That entitles three connections. The second they subdivide, they'll have to bring additional water. That's the minimum in our code, and that's what our code says.
So that, bringing that at the approval of the subdivision.
Yeah, in order to, to get the annexation, they'll have to bring us that, those three acre feet. If they want to bring us more than that to, to provide for Phase One, then that's up to them. We won't approve a subdivision until we get additional water.
Right, that's what I was getting at, so.
Yep, so one point five acre feet is the minimum required.
And it's underground water.
Underground, with a certain priority date.
Yep. Could you go back just, I guess, appease me for a minute? Show me what is, needs to be annexed in along two-hundred south, what is not annexed.
Okay, this will be easier, shown by a different diagram. In the diagram, we're gonna just say that Google is correct. It rarely is, but, but it has a really great picture, so. Come on, Google, help me out here. Okay, you see how, way I like that? So, and it's not up to date, because it doesn't have the, the parcel of, of, of the, the RV park. But basically, with this annexation right here, we will have a, what I like to call the donut hole, will be this area of two-hundred, not two-hundred south, because technically, all of two-hundred south is annexed on either side by so many hundred feet. But there will be this area of agricultural land out in the middle that will be an island. County's fine with that, knowing that our plan is to annex out to the freeway at a minimum. And then you'll have this parcel here, which is also not annexed yet.
Okay, up on two-hundred North.
Parcels, two-hundred North, oh, sorry, I, two-hundred North, two-hundred South.
I think I said two-hundred South, I'm sorry.
So this is, this is the piece, by the way, we have spoken with the owners of that piece about potential annexation. I expect an annexation petition.
So that, everything else that fronts that is annexed, there's just that piece?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. So I think just to close the loop on the twelve-hundred West portion, so if, if it's important to have pedestrian traffic down to one forty-three, again, if this road comes through and is dedicated, there's twenty-four feet of asphalt existing. If it was dedicated and improved by us, we'd have to do a minimum of twenty-six feet of asphalt. It then has private property owners on either side, that upon them doing a subdivision or development application, it would trigger the city's improvements to build out the full width curb gutter sidewalk. But there is an option that we adopt the same proposal that we're saying on two-hundred North, and we look at an asphalt trail that goes down one side of that, recognizing that that would be put in as a temporary path. Then when developed, that would be ripped out, and then the road would be fully built out to the city standard.
So then would you develop that later then? You said when, when it's developed, would you develop that later to sidewalk?
No, we wouldn't, because we don't own the frontage on the road. So the, both of these would be temporar, well, two-hundred south would be adopting the A-nine, making a bad situation better, where it's already subdivided property, that the city has no mechanism to trigger improvements to put it in. What I'm saying is on twelve-hundred West, with the dedication of the road and us widening the asphalt for the drive aisles for the road portion, there could be a discussion on us putting another asphalt path that's temporary, and then upon the RV park doing the next phase, or if the, I forget who the property owners are to the east. But if they came, if they annexed into the city and developed, that would be a dedicated public road that's not fully improved, and they would have to improve it along their frontage.
I just gotta clarify, so the RV park, the plans that are approved for them don't ha, I mean, I know it was designed that it could be a future road, but they've done all of the improvements along that road up to that point that their plans call for that have been approved. So I think to the extent that there would be curb gutter and sidewalk on the east side of the road, as that develops, that, that other land, if it develops residentially or commercially, yes. But I, I don't know if the, the city could enforce the RV park to make that improvement on the west side.
Is it all one tax ID?
What's that?
Is, is the RV park all one tax ID?
Yep.
Because in other cities, I've seen them-
Force them to do it?
Well, you're improving-
Well, here's the thing.
And that, and, and to-
That may come up when they decide whether they want to deed the property,
Right, yeah.
Because now they have potentially the, the requirement to do that. As of today, it's a driveway, which is why we would have never required them to do it before.
Right.
So they may say, well, we don't want to dedicate that road if that means that you're gonna make us put curb gutter and sidewalk in. So, I don't know, that's a sticky-
Right, and that's, and that's something where if, if council's inclined to have some pedestrian path through the negotiation of getting that dedicated, that very well could be a requirement of them saying, hey, we don't want to come out of pocket to build out the west side of our road. If you guys want the road, then you build out our, our side. But that's speculative and outside of-
For right now, the only gain that they get of dedicating that road and utilities in that road, because we haven't accepted either, the, the water line that's in there or the road, is that they don't have to pay taxes on it, and they don't have to maintain it.
Yeah.
So tha, that's their advantage to dedicating it. Disadvantage is if we were to require them to then put in additional improvements on their next phase. They start, I was try, I'm trying to pull up Google Earth, and, and it's not responding. But their first phase pretty much is, from about where the road stopped, it's like this, this half, but it does come almost to the end of the property. So, knowing all the conversations we've had with them, I'm, I'm sure they probably wouldn't really like us to tell them they had to do that, but. So I don't know if it's a given, that's my whole point. I'm gonna actually zoom in so we can see the current-
Well, and, and we don't know that it's a given that they'll even agree to dedicate it. And so that's where-
That's why you didn't write it in there.
Yeah.
Now we can see it, now we can see what, what it is.
But what has been expressed to me is the real concern over two-hundred North and the pedestrian, the kids, you know, access there.
Can I speak to that as part of this deal?
Will you approach?
In the mic.
Can I approach, um, Mike?
That would be great.
Larry Pendleton, part of Prime West, my other partner, Paul Valentine. So look, we're all about safety too. We're participating, those of you that don't know, we're participating with the city on Holyoke Lane with the new curb and gutter and sidewalk. We're paying for part of that.
Thank you.
Okay? So, and the mayor, Dan knows that they approached me, if they could do it, and I said, yeah. And then after the fact, they approached us, would we participate in it? And we are. So we're all for safety, all right? We're all for safety.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So you build this out.
Yeah.
Okay, across the street from two-hundred, not the sidewalk that you, you're generously helping out with. How do the children walk down twelve-hundred West and get to that sidewalk that you're building?
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm gonna tell you, John.
Okay.
Okay. So first of all, this is, this, all this development happens in phases. In every city, anywhere you go, Las Vegas, LA, everybody faces just what we're facing here, just the way it is. So first of all, UDOT for years and years and years and years has been trying to clog that ditch up and per, uh, improvement on that side. But the landowners, the Holly Oaks, if you're looking at the people that own it, and the Benson's, didn't want that. So hence, when we have the diversion by the, the power plant, that's all been open ditch because people wouldn't them agree with, and UDOT was gonna pay for it all. But they, they wouldn't do it. So that's just a little history lesson for you. So we, we're hung up on safety and we're all with you. So let's talk about two hundred. John, I know you don't want them crossing, uh, Holly Oak. That's right, I can see, okay? That will happen at some time, however, but, but right now it's not. So let's talk about two hundred. So we, look, if we're hung up in the weeds on.
Do you mean two hundred south?
Two hun- two hundred north that we're talking about, I'm sorry, up there. So that's a can of worms that you guys inherited and it's, and, and the city council back in those days, they did the best they could do. But there's no curb and gutter in that sidewalk. There's, I, I don't know if anything is up to code there. So if we're hung up on a, on an agreement here, we will agree to put a footpath on two hundred north on the south side. And we will agree to put, to make the road, if it's not twenty-six foot wide, there might actually be a few spots that might not be twenty-six foot wide. We'll make it twenty-six foot wide. But the meandering that Dallas is talking about is exactly right. I mean, the grades and elevations on the city road and the subdivision are crazy. So power poles, part of that on the, on the very west side of, uh, two hundred north, uh, on the south side, it's almost a, a barrel pit i- i- if you've gone by there. So we're gonna have to have Dallas and Perwin City's engineers agree on how to put that footpath and to run it up there. And so, uh, we're, we're, we're with you. We're not, we're not that far off here. And when those kids toodleoo up that sidewalk that we're gonna put in, then they're gonna get up there by, um, Lovell's home and now they're gonna have to go exploring from there to the schools on their own, right?
Yep.
Yep. So does that help anything or, um, when you guys make a decision on this? Uh, we're, we're with you on this deal, so anyway. Any questions for me and I'll let Dallas take it back?
The footpath, by the way, um, the typical width of a walking slash bike path in Utah, especially for shared youth path, generally ranges from ten to twelve feet, with some areas needing a minimum of eight feet for two-way traffic on shared youth path and twelve to fourteen feet is recommended.
Uh, where, do you have those in, in subdivisions? Do you have that on Perwin, uh, asidey- city sidewalks, John? I don't see any of those.
I know, because Perwin was built in the eighteen hundreds.
Well, I, I.
We're, we're thinking, moving forward with this. That's what I'm, I'm just asking, if, if we want to do standards, what the, the typical width of a walking path is ten to twelve feet, why would we want to go backwards in time to make it twelve?
I don't, I don't, I can't even follow your thinking on that, to be honest. I mean, you're talking safety for a, a footpath for kids. What, what's the city doing, okay? What's the city doing on Holly Oak Lane, John? Are they, are they doing a, Dan, are we doing a ten foot wide, uh, mayor? Or is that what we're doing?
Five foot wide.
Five foot. And that's what we do on two hundred, okay? Thanks. Thanks.
John, I, I think the standard you're referring to is more for like a dedicated multi-use path. What, what we're proposing is, is a supplement to a sidewalk. Because of the challenges of building out an unimproved road that, on the south side of two hundred where there's power poles, fences, culverts, all that. So we're, we, we use the term asphalt path to signify a, a sidewalk equivalent, but not a, not a ten-foot two-way traffic.
What we would call multi-use path.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we're, ours is a, is, because there's no, because there's no land use applications that are gonna, that are gonna be forced by the city to improve that, we're proposing a sidewalk equivalent and that's why we're looking at the four to five foot width.
So then when we, if, if you did this, the walking pathway, and we got one of those real good heavy rains and it goes down there and washes the, the pathway out, would you rebuild it?
Well, it would be a, so we, we would be building, so what we're proposing is in line with what the city's standards are and it would be an improvement, just like any road. But I've driven two hundred north and the drainage, and that's why the word meandering's in there because there's a lot to figure out as far as making a path work with culverts under intersections, power poles, fences. But, but to answer your question bluntly, no, once we install it, it's a.
I mean, I, I figured that.
Yeah, it's, it's a city improvement that's in the city main.
But that's, that's the chance we take for doing that because it can get a lot of water running down there when we get the downpours and it'll just wash it away.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, it's a.
I think, I think the design, the design would be a path, then a swell, then the road.
Yeah.
The swell would carry the, the water.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the reason for the meandering is because we're gonna have to work around where the existing, I, some of them have defined ditches, some of them don't, but we have to work around whatever the existing drainage is. But I, I think that it would look similar to the detail where it's a detached, it's not, it's not a four-foot lane that's with a painted stripe off the edge of the asphalt. It's detached from the roadway.
Right, right.
And then it meanders around power poles and then we have to make the drainage work to the best of our ability, given the existing conditions out there.
Dallas, I'm gonna have, just say for your defense, that Skyview, I guess it's called Skyview, was never put in properly. It was in phases, it was in different segments. I mean, yeah, talk about phase, but you look at the width of those streets in that subdivision, you look at it, it's, it is something to have to put together to kinda, you know, to join. I, I'd have to give you, you know, defense there because that is not something you can just go in and just mesh together. It, it's, it's a challenge.
Well, it's, it's a challenge at all the intersections where there's culverts too, as far as how do you have something that even resembles a pedestrian ramp where you can cross the sh- I mean, so there's, there's a lot to, it sounds like a, oh, we're just gonna throw a four-foot path in there, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of things to work out to even try to make that, make that happen.
So I just gotta say something real quick and, and to, to, I hear what Dallas is saying, the, the reason for the meandering. Um, normally, we don't, we don't want to take on somebody, something that's gonna be so, um, non-defined. Um, the reasoning for it, and I'm really curious as to what the survey would show out there. Um, again, back to the parcel viewer, but the parcel viewer actually lines up pretty good to the fences, um, that are there. It shows that there's approximately sixty feet, um, give or take, from one fence line to the other. Um, and it looks like the road is pretty much hogging the, to the north, especially where it gets really thin. Um, and I guess my point there is, um, and if you look at the satellite imagery on the, on the fence, you'll see this, you'll see it lines up pretty close to where that, where the parcel boundary is being shown. Um, therefore, if you put a meandering path here and it meanders around the, um, power poles, there is a fair amount of space between the road and the path to be able to redefine the swell.
Yeah.
And I, I, if you, i- if the council's comfortable with that, I think it's doable. Um, this, this area has never been great for drainage, um, we don't have, we don't have good swells in the roads and so what happens is they puddle up on either side. Um, this, this, this whole thing needs, needs some attention and it's gonna need some investment by the city because we have what we have. I think Larry called it a mess and it is a mess. Um, so you're either gonna have a meandering path and make some improvements of the drainage or you're gonna have a very, very, very expensive asphalt, I mean, concrete, redesigning the roads and doing, um, all of your crossings, all of your EDA pad ramps down to those and, and all of that stuff. Those are the only two ways that this really gets improved. So I guess the, the question is, are you comfortable with that, with a, with a path, sorry, with an asphalt trail, which we will have to take on and maintain, that's, to answer that question, including if it gets washed out, that's gonna be the city's, um, the city's thing, um, up until this point and then nothing from in and on out. Looks like Aldo has some comments and I'm glad to hear it because he's the guy that actually has to maintain this stuff.
Um, just a couple of comments that, that may fall in line with some of this work. This was an area that we went into last year and crack sealed, getting ready to do chip seal projects through this area, um, and kinda reestablish our roadway widths and stuff like that. Um, of course, we're talking chip seal, not asphalt, which would have to be dealt with in those areas. But I think this falls somewhat in line or could potentially fall in line with some of our street maintenance that is coming up anyways.
No, we're not talking about widening roads though, are you?
No, no, well, I would only widen the road when we're chip sealing to get it back to that twenty-six foot, uh, what we, we should be doing.
But on top of whether it's already a base and all that, right?
Yeah, we, we stretch out a little bit with the chipper because we tried to reestablish where the roads have crumbled off and cracked out. Some of this road width down there is only twenty feet wide in areas where, where it has crumbled. Some of that, you may not even have asphalt underneath and it was just a chip seal when it was put in. Um, we would want to take a look at that. Um, but like, like they, to their, to their credit, you know, it is kind of a, a, a mess down there. This may be a chance that as we all work together, we can, we can come in and improve a, a nice area and, and get a good access for the residents down in that area. Because they do, they have a lot of issues with drainage down through there. It was, you know, unfortunately, we are, I call it new Perwin, we are pushing new Perwin forward. We're having to create and, and fix a lot of the issues that are behind us that, that like, like Larry said, people did the best they could when they could do it. And we're, we're going to do that now. We're gonna do the best that we can with what we can, moving forward with. But, um, I think it, it, just, just so the council's aware, that this is an area that we are looking at improving anyways. We've already moved in with crack seal and stuff like that, prepping to, to move forward on improving some of this stuff.
Hey, Aldo, just curious, what'd you find when you did the crack seal as far as those street widths in that subdivision area? Were they wide enough or they, I mean, what'd you find on those street widths?
They're, they're, I didn't measure actual street widths, but they're all pretty dang narrow when you try to pass people as you're going through there. Um, we, when we were crack sealing, we're just filling cracks, you know, and, and.
The chip seal will come in spring?
Yeah, the, the chip seal we're looking at in the spring of, of this area along with Aspen Gold, uh, Maple Springs, a lot, so a lot of that area that we were crack sealing, um, that we did last fall to get ready for, for next spring, chip seal.
I think this is good information to blend with this. I think this is, yeah.
You know, as, as a resident, take it off, you know, if, if we can work with developers and the cities and everything and improve it all the way around.
Yeah.
As a resident.
So let me say something real quick, but, um, I, I want to explain to the applicants. Larry called me a while back and he said, where, where did this come from? And I don't know if you've, anybody who's seen the, it's a little cartoon image and there's a guy standing looking at a number nine drawn on the floor. And he said, that's a number nine. And there's a guy standing on the other side of this number nine, he's looking at it and says, that's not a nine, that's a number six. I think that how we got into this, um, thing in the first place, the current access to this property, as Larry knows well, in fact, there's a truck driving down the road. That's gotta be Larry's truck on the satellite image, going down there to farm. Um, the current access is two hundred north and from a city-centric point of view, that's how you get to this property. So from the start, when this annexation agreement was, was, was drawn up, we, we, we took the, the last template that we had worked through with AJM. We looked at it from the perspective of, there's one existing access right now, it's clearly suboptimal. It is not up to standard and now we're about to add additional homes, potentially with density and things like that. So that's where this whole thing came from is, A, that existing access needs to be improved. B, there's already seventy-something homes off of one access, therefore you need a second one. That's where that came from. Now, from the developer's standpoint, who's looking at this from a totally, they're looking at the other side of this saying, two hundred north, that's the last thing because they want to start down here at the south. And they want to develop here, here's this road that almost touches their property, it was designed to be sent. And so they're like, no, 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 we want to start down here and build our way back. That's where we started from two different points of view. And I think now everybody understands everything. The question is, is are we comfortable with what on a phasal approach? And what can we put in there that we can be on the same page? And, and if, and if we absolutely can't get on the same page, we have a division of the vote, we vote. But that's, that's kinda how we got here and I just wanted to be, explain that, what, what's going on, that this, it really isn't about, you know, vilifying anybody for trying to not be safe. It's about, how do we get this thing, how do we get the right result that's something that works for both parties? I'm out. Rochelle, you were about to talk and I jumped in there.
No, I think, um, basically, everybody has said like what my concern is. I've talked to Larry in length about what my concerns are. Um, I just, if we can come to some sort of agreement where we can include that two hundred north as one of the access, one of the two accesses, I will be happy. Because having two accesses going down to Holy Oak, I'll never, I won't go for that just because of, we're all talking about safety and the, and the students and the kiddos. So I don't, I mean, I like, I didn't, at first, I really was like, you are gonna curb and gutter that thing and I am not budging, but driving down there, I even drove down, like, I'm a visual person, I gotta drive it. So my husband and I drove down the frontage road and yeah, I can see why you guys don't want to probably do that in phase one because if you really do start down there in that corner and that's still like possible, um, I can see why it would, it would be a lot of improvement that you would have to do to get up to there. Now, like or not, kids are gonna drive their bikes through all of that open field anyway to get to that street. We, we know that. They do that all over Perwin already. They already, they create all of their trails. So it's just, when are we going to, I just want you to do the two hundred north and include that in the plan, not as in like what your last paragraph of your proposal was, is that there's a potential that we will never do that. I'm, I'm not okay with that.
Okay.
Well, why don't we unlike phase one, require a path from that point to connect to two hundred and that dirt road has to be abandoned as a car and cannot be driven on until we get through phase three or whatever phase you're gonna go with. Put a temp path from there so we know the kids can immediately go from phase one over there.
Well, and they're gonna, they're gonna do that.
Yeah, but to make it a temporarily asphalt trail so it's a cleaner, you know, they'll more likely want to ju- people will walk on it. It'll keep them from ever wanting to go towards Holy Oak, so.
You mean asphalt on their property?
Yeah.
Pathway?
Just a pathway from phase one, so when they go say phase two, they still maintain that same pathway. And then we get to phase three, then we make two hundred north, or yeah, two hundred north correct. Making your pathways, making your stuff, making it work. Get your streets correct. Because like that street, like in front of my property, you got four feet of dirt, forty-four feet of asphalt and basically eleven feet of curb gutter sidewalk rocks, like, I mean, it's just, it's an odd setup. And then you got your poles right down in the middle of all of it.
Yeah.
So. But Larry, clarify me, didn't you offer that you go and, you know, work on that two hundred north now and put that meandering path and?
Yeah, that's a negotiation for every month on the approval.
Yeah, yeah, that's a negotiation for every month on the approval. Look, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and do, I mean, everybody understands here that-
Yeah.
And John, to your, to your deal, we are moving forward here. I mean, I, I agree with that. I think we're just, we're kinda confusing what we're doing. I mean, trails and stuff in parks and, like Cedar City. We have some property down there now that we're developing. And Cedar City has a trail that John's referring to. And it is a ten foot, it's a hiking trail and stuff like that, okay? That goes through a lot of the city. And that is a ten foot wide, uh, east. And Dallas is working on that for this. But, uh, but what I'm saying is everybody, we're all for safety. We're all good. And the city knows as well as I do, we're not gonna beat that dead horse. That the city's done the sidewalks anywhere and the kids are having to fend for themselves and we all know that. But we will help our portion of doing that. We, we do the meandering path.
Okay.
Uh, up on, uh, two hundred south.
Mm-hmm.
And if the road isn't wide enough in some areas, which I think there are a few areas it's not wide enough. We'll make it to the twenty-six foot line.
Okay. Well, I think what you're talking is what Aldo was talking. Some cooperative, you know, effort here to make this work now.
We have to work with those sometimes.
Yeah. So I just wanna make sure. I, I think I understood you and I just wanted to-
And I wanna make sure everybody understands.
Yeah, okay.
But when are we gonna require them to do the second access? And is that going to be the second access?
Yeah, that's just it. If the second access, if you were talking once before about, were they gonna work with Rick and, or whoever it was? And go second access, but, but we'd still require three?
Yeah, that, I, I actually think, uh, uh, because the master plan roadway that comes up from a twelve hundred. Up that way, there's actually two master plan roads that come off of Holly Oak there. So depending on what the Holly Oaks and the Bensons do, with, whether they develop, whether they sell it, whatever they do. I wouldn't be surprised that you might have at least one more other access into this. At least one more. And that would give you maybe three or four if, when this is all said and done to this subdivision. Does that answer David? Does that, does that answer?
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna interrupt that.
Yeah, Rick Anderson's talking to me right now.
Yeah.
About some stuff, so anyway.
Oh, the key to me is like, just losing that, we don't fix two hundred north at all. So.
Well, and then we only have accesses to Holyoke. Like, I don't like only having all these accesses to Holyoke. We, we have to do two hundred, no matter what. Because we have to have an off of Holyoke access.
So I would, I would suggest that that is at whatever time, so as we've talked about, there's, you can see the grids of all the different master plan roads through there. So there are, there are options. When this is all said and done and everything's developed in this area. There'll be six or seven different access points. So there's the potential that twelve hundred works with our first phase. There's the potential it doesn't. It sounds like there's not a, we're, we're striking the portion that says, we're not doing two hundred at all. Larry's saying we're doing two hundred. I would say that at whatever point we utilize two hundred north as an access is when those improvements come on two hundred north. So if we can't work something out with twelve hundred west and that ends up being our first access, again, it gets improved with the first phase. If we get to our eighty-first lot and we were, we secured twelve hundred in the first phase and we need a second. Cause we're going to access two hundred at some point, but whether that's the first phase, third phase, fifth phase.
It needs to be sooner rather than later, in my opinion. And that's just me, I'm one of five.
I just can't do Holyoke right now. Not to start with. Good kids out there, uh-uh.
For the pedestrians, uh-
Pardon me?
For the pedestrians, yeah.
Yeah, I can't do that.
That's why I say in phase one, we tie temp trail over to two hundred.
So, so Dave Harris's, Councilman Harris's concept, what does everybody think about that? Where effect, so this is an idea for phase one. This isn't a, this is where phase one is going.
Right.
If, if phase one were to be put here and a, and an asphalt, asphalt path were to be connected through. Um, then your pedestrians, let, so I, and I just wanna point out, two hundred north isn't improved. But there is a dirt road and it is, um, potentially, and it's even called frontage road. Potentially, that could even be part of the, the frontage road itself. Um, Dave is basically, sorry, Councilman Harris is proposing that an asphalt path would be connected through to here. And on approval of phase one.
And have that dirt road abandoned.
Does it need to be asphalt?
Could you revise that to, look, if, if they're, they're pretty much walking on dirt all over town anyway. And, and so I'd hate to have to put that pathway in from phase one up to I am. Why don't we just have a graded path that we can grade out?
If we grade it out, rock it, so it's just not a mud mess. It's an appropriate trail. Yeah, yeah.
I would be okay. I could live with that too.
The, so to clarify, cause I'll be the one that ends up putting this on, on black and white words. Um, two hundred north improvements would be put in when that phase is done. But in the meantime, what we're talking about would be put in with phase one.
Right, has to go in with phase one. And then like, say phase two, you gotta figure out, okay, where's your second access coming through?
Yeah, well, that's a given. That's, that is gonna have to be put in the agreement, we can.
So a second access comes through is gonna, wherever that goes, no matter what, that has to happen.
That's gonna be a code, a code thing, which is gonna be at the subdivision level. Um, unless you guys are very specific about what the second access is. We're, we're not even saying what the first access is with this proposal. Is everybody comfortable with that? It may be twelve hundred, it may be the frontage road, and it may be two hundred, potentially, if, if, if-
Like, it's okay.
You need to build today and you're having a problem with these property owners, you're probably gonna take two hundred. The challenge with that is, there may need to be a second access to even use two hundred as your first access. Just because it's a dead end with so many residents is already using it. That's why that was the justification in the first place. But.
I'd rather see twelve hundred be done.
I think you're gonna see two hundred north guys. I think that, I think Dave Meyer's gonna develop there pretty quick. And then the other folks right there, I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna see two hundred south. Turning into a pretty nice setup here within the next three years. That's, that's what I think. So, and, and as far as Holyoke, I know John and, uh, and Sharon have a, a problem with Holyoke people walking. Of course, that's why we're doing the city now, the, the one development is just because of that reason. And it's good. And we're, everywhere, we're, we're glad to do it. But, you know, when you hit that other side, Holly Oak's gonna change. You know what I'm saying? But I'm not thinking that's gonna be in two or three years. It, it might be long.
It might be ten or more.
Yeah.
Well, and I also gotta point out, and thanks for bringing that up Larry, um, two hundred north is, was never meant to be a major access point. Even for this area, the frontage road, so if you look at the map to understand the different colors. This yellow dotted road is actually the minor collector that is wider. It's sixty-six foot wide. Um, it is, it is meant to be traffic that is conveyed to four hundred north, which is a major collector. That's how most traffic is gonna flow, will be from Gap Road down to Holyoke Lane, right here by the interchange. Anything in black is a local road section and two hundred north, a lot of these citizens that have been talking to the councils, who've been talking about it. They've been concerned about too much traffic on two hundred north. Upon full build out, two hundred north won't actually take a lot of traffic. Now, it'll take foot traffic because to, to the point that kids are walking to school, it's the most direct route, right? That's how you get to school. In fact, I would love to see one hundred north, which changes to, no, it doesn't change. That's actually the best route, right, right through.
It really is.
But it goes through several different properties and some built and some not built and all that stuff. Two hundred north is at least built. So that's why we're focusing on it. But anyways, I just had to point out that, the point that the frontage road at some point will go through. Who knows when development will happen, but.
Will that frontage road have, have to be built by property owners in each phase of property?
Yes, mm-hmm.
So you'd have to build that road?
Yes, yes, we will build that road within our boundary.
Like Dave was saying, put a path next to that road.
Yeah, you could do your temp path up to it and make a path.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think what we're talking about is wherever our first phase, if we're not using two hundred north as an access. Then we are doing a gravel, gravel trail to the existing dirt road to get pedestrian, bu, kids on bikes to two hundred north.
We just wanna make sure it's not car accessible and, yeah. And like, I don't know, me personally as access number one on twelve hundred. I would like to see, say, the west side of the road being curb guttered, sidewalked. And I don't care about the east side, cause that's undeveloped and, you know.
Um.
So Larry, back to two hundred north, would the meandering path go in with the first phase or not?
If that's, if that's what you guys want, it sounds like Rochelle, you're, you're contacting-
I, yeah, I think it should.
And we agree with that.
Even, you know, just getting your path up to there. Just getting your path up to that point and then having that meandered pa, path through there.
Yeah.
Okay. In phase one, right?
We do it, yeah.
Okay.
I wanted the sidewalks, like Rochelle said, but it's really not feasible. Along with the next one.
It's not. It's not.
Well, I just wanna make sure we s, keeps the kids off Holyoke.
What I like about this discussion is our hearts are all in the same place. And we're talking about working together with the goal of keeping our kids safe. And I think, you know, I was just sitting here going through my, uh, memory and thinking cumulatively, how many kids have, we've raised in this town? And it's the wild west. We just don't wanna see them froggering, you know, froggering across two hundred, froggering. I mean, that's what I visualize as there isn't a path made. But they do tend to go path of least resistance, you know, point A to point B. And as long as we get in front of that with a plan for them, I think that's the, that meets a lot of the concern.
I would agree.
And you are one of five, but you are the only school teacher.
If anybody wonders what the mayor refers to when she says froggering, that's what she means. The Frogger game. Sorry about that. Um, I have to, I have to point out, um, if, if, if we're, if, it looks like we're coming to some sort of a consensus. Um, how, and I think this is probably a code thing more than anything else. So I don't know if we even put it in the agreement or not. But if two hundred north is the only access on, on day number one. I think that we would probably not approve additional ac, additional development off of one single point of access that is two hundred north today. So we would probably wanna put that in the annexation agreement or just have an understanding. Just because you're, you're talking, too, too many homes fed off of one access point to start with. So if, I don't, does everybody, I mean, I, we're getting to a good point. I'm just saying, I would probably still clarify that in the agreement.
Were you gonna start down on the west end anyhow? That's what I thought.
Which, which, so I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a problem unless, you know, i, if, if we just clean this up. And say that a path needs to be put from phase one, wherever it is, through, through to the Sky Ranch subdivision.
Yeah.
And, um, and leave it at that, that, that's all fine and good. If that annexation goes through and you guys vote yes on the annexation, they come in for their first subdivision and they don't have another path. And instead it's two hundred north, they just wanna get started. We're gonna be in the position of looking administratively, do we permit that or not? And, and, and looking at that fire code. And I would have to say that I would probably say it wouldn't pass the fire code with one access. Where there's already so many homes only on two hundred. So it would be easier to just clarify that now, make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, and also like we discussed back and forth, that that meandering path be done in that phase.
Right, well, that would be covered. That, that looks like we already got that wrapped up. I just wanted to clarify that.
Make sure. Well, sure, because you can't exceed that fire code.
So what I'm saying is, is the way that this would be written, if we're all on the same page is, cause we're not voting on this tonight. The reason it was on the action agenda is so we could at least vote on what we agreed the language would be in that paragraph, but that's, that's fine. Um, we would write it essentially to say, if another access point that's on the transportation master plan is the primary access. They can build up to thirty homes before a second access is required. And on phase one, wherever it is in the subdivision, they will make the following improvements to two hundred north, which is a meandering trail. And they will also connect to phase one, wherever it is, that trail via gravel, whatever. Is everybody comfortable with that? Cause that's how I would write that. I would make it sound much more eloquent.
Yeah.
But that's, that's the concepts. I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah, the dirt roads.
So, yeah, so asphalt meandering trail on two hundred south to our property. And then within our property, uh, gravel, temporary gravel trail from phase one.
To phase one.
Yeah, to two hundred north.
Yeah. And if fa, and if two hundred north, and two hundred north can't be the primary access, there has to be a second access. If two hundred north is the primary, just because of the fire problem.
And the second access.
Any access that's consistent with-
So what, but can that be built to an A-nine standard then? So twenty-six feet of asphalt?
How do you guys feel about that?
Yeah.
The off-site improvements, A-nine standards. Okay. Did that answer your question?
Well, that didn't take five hours.
Any, do you need any additional clarification?
Oh, I'm good. I'm good. I, I don't know if, if, if anybody else has anything they wanna add. I, what I would propose is that I'll write it up like that, throw it to Scott. You guys can review it again with legal yourselves. If you feel comfortable with it, we'll put it on the next agenda for, for a vote on the annexation agreement. And then an ordinance and a vote on the annexation itself.
Scotty, you feel good about that?
Yeah, I think as long as they take into consideration the health, safety and welfare of the public. And as long as you're comfortable, if the city hasn't held you to something that otherwise would not be required. Balancing the activities of, sorry, we'll have to delay your ride on, but we're not there yet. And we don't wanna do that, so, yeah.
So I, the only thing I, I think I still need clarification on is, if we secure twelve hundred west with our first subdivision phase. As our access point, we will then have satisfied the two, well, we will hook onto two hundred north. We'll have the dirt trail with asphalt trail. What standard is twelve hundred west being developed to?
See, I like, you care about-
Twenty-four feet of asphalt today?
A-nine, that's what we just said.
Yeah. So A-nine with, but where it says where applicable on a sidewalk?
No.
On the west side on twelve hundred.
So David-
I'd like to see it on twelve hundred on.
So David's saying he'd like to see-
On the one side.
Curb gutter and sidewalk on one side on twelve hundred.
So there's a possibility that those guys negotiate that we put that in. I don't know where, how Larry feels about this, but I would, I would.
I, I, what do you think?
Well, I would, I would say that where they're both off-site, private frontages, that we do a similar asphalt trail. That's considered temporary. And then upon development of either side, that road will get fully built out to the full sixty width. With curb gutter sidewalk both sides as they develop. So I would say that we put-
Isn't the west side pretty much developed up to your property, up to the property line?
Well, there's the, there's the first house coming off, yeah, the Robinson house. But then I, at least the way I've seen it applied in other cities. If you pull a permit on a, on a tax ID that has frontage on a road that's not fully improved. They have to improve it to city standard with that. So I would say that-
Do you have some sort of agreement at development time, something going through?
That's a big kicker, I know.
I'm, I'm, knowing the property owner and all of our debates over the tiniest inch of fence, I'm guessing they're gonna say no.
Yeah, I guarantee you that will.
And we would have to say, you have to do it and it would be a big fight.
Yeah.
And I don't blame you.
I mean, I don't, I don't wanna leave it, I mean, I, I would just say, let's get on the same page right now. I would, and, and if you guys want to enforce that and have me enforce that. And then lis, and then have them come back and fight it, then that's fine. We can, we can go that route.
Yeah, well, like I'd happily enforce that.
Well, we have, see, we approved the plans for their entire park.
I know.
It just had phase one developed, but we improved the plans which showed all the outline, the fence they had to do. Of course, and Councilman Burton and I talked about this at length yesterday. Um, all of the fencing requirements, which have been the hot topic that we've talked about, looked at this whole thing as a driveway and the fence went all the way around it. It changes when this becomes a road and now their frontage is on the road. What improvements now have to be on the frontage of a road versus now it's a driveway?
Yeah, that's the problem we've had. Stuff's never been properly done in the past.
And I, I agree with.
Next guy.
I agree with Dallas as to the, the fact that we should enforce that. I'm just telling you, it's been a battle for every last improvement in that RV park. So we would bro- we'd probably be up against a fight and it would, they would probably come to the city council at some point asking to avoid that. So we would have asked that that be negotiated into the acquiring of the road, but that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, it's, but it's probably gonna have to happen. Negotiated. It, it, I don't know, I got a lot to say about it. It's not really, it's not really fair and it's, you know.
See, cause when they came in to approve it, it was a driveway.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's not fair, I don't know.
And we're not gonna make them put curb gutter and sidewalk on a driveway.
Yeah, it's, it shouldn't have ever been a driveway.
Probably shouldn't have been a driveway.
It should've been a proper road, very beginning.
But none of us were here at the time. Well, some of us were here, but, but the, but it was a, uh, it was more the debate of the annexation with that. And, um, I don't even know if it was on our transportation master plan as a road. It is now. I don't know if it even was back then. We could've enforced it, but. So.
Did that answer your question?
Kinda.
No?
Really?
I didn't think it did. I'm like, I don't think we actually answered.
We were discussing and we said A nine and everybody nodded and then Dave said, wait, does A nine mean curb gutter sidewalk? And I said, no. And he said, I, I would like to see that.
I don't, I don't wanna see it on the east side, but west side I would like to see it, but that's just, I don't know.
So how wide is that road right now, twelve hundred west?
The right of way is down here, where there is an actual right of way is sixty feet.
Yeah, it, it, we, we planned it, I gave it a sixty foot road.
Be a sixty foot right of way with a road. Um, the exact width of the road, somewhere around twenty four feet.
Yeah.
So that whole ro- road would have to be improved?
Road needs a little bit of improvement.
Twenty six feet.
It needs to be improved to some standard.
Yeah, so we, if we secure that at a minimum, would have to put in an additional two feet of asphalt. And then, and then depending on how the negotiation goes to get there, there's the potential that they say we have to put in the curb gutter and sidewalk. In the absence that they don't say that, then do we put an asphalt trail down one side or the other, recognizing that it's temporary and gonna get ripped out when either side comes forward with a development and they have to pull it through.
Like, I wouldn't touch it. The west side's pretty much developed, I guess, you know. So, I don't know, I'd like to see it there, but at the same time, I don't know. It's tough, cause like, they, you would be forced to do something that should've been enforced before, you know. And at one point, is it fair, not fair, or, you know?
Almost sounds like the RV park should be putting it in.
Yeah.
A portion of it.
And they won't, you know, they won't, you know, so. Otherwise, we're walking trail both sides, huh? Water's controlled. I don't know, like I, I could live with it.
With the walking trails? Was everybody else?
Think.
I'm fine with that too.
Walking trail going, uh, temperature walking trail down twenty or twelve, twelve hundred west.
So we would say that A nine is sidewalk is applicable on both sides if we utilize twelve hundred west as an access.
As a main access.
Yeah.
Is that any, yeah, that's a good point, Dan. Is that the, if that's the main access? Or if, or if we hooked on to two hundred north and then that was our second access, are we putting trails on it?
The one side for sure.
The south side, five foot.
Wait, south side, what do you mean? East or west?
East or west, I, on twelve hundred.
Two hundred south? Which two hundred? Yeah, I was talking, I was, I was with Larry on that one. Which two hundred are we talking?
Well, what Dallas and I were talking about was twelve hundred west.
Yeah. So we.
This is the primary access to a phase one, what are we talking about?
So if, yeah, so fir- so twelve hundred west is our first phase.
You know, I would probably say don't even put it on the east side. I'd say trail it down just as that, um, yeah, that RV park side.
Whether it's the first or second or third or, or first or second, we would have a trail on the west side.
West side.
And then we had proposed a four foot asphalt trail when, in the way that we had written it on here, which is three inches of asphalt, four inches of untreated base, based on the city's detail. But that was on the larger multi-use trail that's the ten foot.
I like the five foot that Larry mentioned.
Did you say trail on the west side of twelve hundred north or?
West side, yes, west.
That's on the RV park side?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know how that's gonna go. So you're saying if that east side develops, then that would be improved at that time?
Yes. And it would be built out from the existing twenty four feet of asphalt, full asphalt width curb gutter sidewalk on the east side.
When you build it out.
When it builds.
Do we wanna encourage walking down twelve hundred to Hollyoak? I almost would rather. I mean, do we even need a walking path or a trail down that street? Like, do we want to encourage that?
My question, is that gonna require some negotiations with that RV park?
Yes. Well, we have to negotiate with them to get a right of way.
They do, yeah. At the end of the day, there will be a sixty foot right of way deeded to the city with a road and whatever else is agreed upon.
I could, I couldn't agree with you Rochelle, not to encourage.
Well, and I'm thinking also for putting a walking path down that, the road already is right up to Robinson's property. And then we're gonna be causing other, we're gonna create another issue right there.
There's a gap.
There's room in there for a, yeah, walking path.
Where the electrical runs up there.
Yeah, we, when we did the RV park, we did a parcel line, so there's a sixty foot corridor outside of Robinson's.
So this, this is what we're talking about here. There's, there's sixty feet from the, the property line to the other side. That's what, you even tore out some like corrals and stuff and, and acquired that sixty foot.
Even through the trees right there, like there is enough spot, space to walk.
How wide is that street right now?
Where's my Google Maps? We'll, we'll drive down it, as John said. He asked me if we could drive down roads today in the meeting and I said, yep, we can. I don't know if they ran their Google car down there, though, but we can look.
Cause it, well, I guess you could probably, but I know it like drops off right there into a ditch.
Mm, oh yeah, you do have a ditch there, right to about, right here.
They've got a pole there, a light pole.
Crazy. A little crazy I am, not all the way.
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna touch that.
Smart man.
Gosh, where you going then?
Well.
He doesn't know.
I'm trying to show that. As soon as I scroll out, it goes down, so I apologize. So there is some room here, um, some of that might have to be dealt with if it's on the east side.
Yeah, piped or something.
I would just rather not even encourage walking. Not saying that they're not going to.
Bikers are gonna go up and down that. You, you're gonna get bikers out of RV parks.
Yeah. Good point.
Back here, it's clearly not a problem. Here, you got that ditch that goes through and then crosses over.
So you want to put a walking path being right there?
Why not go down the east side?
So the, you know, eventually develops, it'll probably get destroyed, so you might as well just.
Well, then it's put in permanently.
So they can destroy it later and we gotta fix it later.
Well, they would just rip it out when they improve the road.
Yeah, they just put in the new improvements. The east side, I, I just don't want that RV park, I, and I, I don't really, well, it's that Mr. Robinson that I'm concerned.
I mean, that's my knee jerk, is that's gonna put people walking back and forth right along his property line even more. If there's a path that's there that's designated for t- for foot traffic, um, I think people will, it will feel encouraging to come out and walk down the side and, but that's just my percept- perspective. Having been to that property a few times.
It'll definitely be easier on the east side.
On the east? Oh, yeah.
I think so.
East side's way easier.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, do it on the east.
Let's do it on the east side.
And so the east side trail is a requirement when we utilize twelve hundred west as an access, whether it's first or second?
I would bet it's first.
Yeah, I, I, I think we all hope it's first, but.
Where else would the first access be if it wasn't that?
Well, we'd have to use two hundred and, and we'd have to, we'd still have to look at trying to get that as a right of way, but that's where my mind was going, is if we use two hundred north as our first access while we're hamstrung by the fire requirement and need a second, then to what extent do we have to improve the second? And then what, because that then gets into the negotiation of still trying to secure twelve hundred west. Cause we're basically saying we have to have twelve hundred west have a project.
Pretty much.
And it may be that the frontage road, Rick, wants to develop that sooner and that could, that could, that could come fruition quickly or something.
Mm-hmm. Hey, are we, are we good?
I think we're good now, yeah. Thank you.
I feel a lot better. Thank you.
Finally, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
All right. We're going to move to discussion on Main Street crosswalk project. And I'm so grateful that Matt Rhodes is here. He's our regional for, I'll probably get your title wrong. Are you a director? He's the boss. Um, he watches out for our area and several others, but he's here tonight. Um, just kind of looking through, you know, as you work through and we, we've got a lot going on, but I have my to-do list that are now rolling to-do lists and sometimes things take priority over other things. And, and I noticed that our crosswalk improvements had kinda marched it down and I didn't like that. I was like, we really all agreed, we wanted to do something. Um, we were very much together on that. We talked about painting the crosswalks. I talked to different, um, public works managers and city managers about things they've done to try to improve the safety on their crosswalks. And, you know, it's really a crosswalk intersection discussion, two hundred and Main, uh, Main and Center, um, some areas around the school. You know, we just look at those and we know, you know, that we don't like some of the safety issues and near misses and things. And so Matt and I talked again and, and really it's just, uh, I started with, I'm like, okay, who, who, who on the council might wanna help me uh, get this across the finish line and would be down for, you know, actually painting the street if we could. And then as we talked about it a little bit more, I was like, okay, Dave Harris is roads, Rochelle Topham is, uh, uh, public safety. So the three of us, when could we do this and could we do it before school started? And that's kinda where this, this whole thing started. And then as we talked a little bit more about it, we had some more creative ideas. Um, Councilmember Topham was like, could we do a stencil of the ram? You know, could we do some other colors and things like that? And, and Dave Harris was just like, I'm down. And so I knew we were gonna get it done, but then I started being worried, like, what if we did something? And it was like, well, you can't do that. And so then I thought, we better get Matt involved in this. And so we've been talking for a few days about it and it was just very coincidental that, is it your boss Cody? Um, had just been in a, a meeting, a workshop, retreat or something for two days. And this was a big topic in there, is what are our new guidelines? They've changed even since we discussed it the last time. So do you wanna start there or do you wanna, we, we have things we can do, we have things we can't do. We really aren't looking at painting bricks anymore. That ends up not being the thing to do. Um, we could've done that in the night and you guys would've said, why'd they do that? That's really slippery, or whatever the reasons are that people don't do that anymore. So we're down to a couple of options now, but things that we actually could do. So now it's what are we doing, who's going to do it, and when are we going to do it?
So I think, first of all, I think probably I would like to start off with, you know, we, we are limited on a few things we can do. They just updated the MUTCD, which is our manual of traffic control. Um, you know, we can't do any logos in intersections, we can't have any contrasting colors with crosswalks. I know.
Who, whose idea was that? That's dumb. And I mean this good anyway.
The mayor and I worked on a little bit of a workaround, a little bit.
Have to come down.
It's not, it's not probably exactly what you want, but there is potentially something that you can do. Like, we can't do it on our roads, you can do it on the city street that ties to our roads.
So how does SGU get around that?
They don't.
Oh, they don't anymore?
Nope, we don't allow it. There's, there was, you know, one of our biggest concerns was we, we received a lot of complaints from our plow drivers because it's so slick. And they weren't able to make the turns. So there's a huge, huge safety issue. And then we have some pretty specific verbiage through state code that we're not supposed to advertise in the right of way. And so we're moving away from doing all that. We've been telling all the other schools throughout the state, no, we're not gonna do this anymore. But you have some city streets that are really close to where these areas that we're talking. We don't control the city streets. There's a little bit of a workaround.
So we're back to looking at our intersections and we just had that up and, um, we can look at that or Dan can drive us around on Google Earth. But, you know, Center and Main and two hundred and Main are the ones I keep focusing on. And it's interesting because I'm like, could we not just put stop ahead? And Matt's like, well, actually on Center and Main, you do have stop ahead. Do people stop? I'm like, darn it. So, um, when you approach Center, um, you know, if you're on Center coming off the mountain where people tend to kind of have a, a little bit of, um, ski or snowboarding hypnosis and they don't realize they're coming up on Main Street and they need to stop, it does say stop ahead there already.
And we also have the signs warning that there's a stop ahead. So we actually have two warning devices that there is a stop ahead. So, you know, luckily, our timing on this was pretty good because Cody had been in Salt Lake with our traffic and safety team going over some of the updates and stuff like that. He's our operations engineer. Hannah and I have talked almost as much as Mayor and I this week. I'm trying to figure some of this stuff out, you know. And obviously Cody did want me to echo that we, we do wanna work with you guys. Um, at these intersections for the stop issues, we've pretty much addressed everything that we possibly can. The only thing that we maybe would look at, you know, recommending would be trimming some of the trees there on Center Street so those signs and stuff are a little bit more visible. Um, as Cody and I kinda talked today, you know, maybe one of the things that the city needs to look at is potentially a little bit more enforcement and maybe some education in these areas. Cause there's just not a whole lot more that we can really do with these intersections. Not that we don't wanna do something, it's just what, what do we do? I mean, we kinda have all of our standard stuff in place, you know. And that's kinda one of the issues, is you can kinda see these trees that are overhanging, there's cars that are parking there. Those are all things that kind of obstruct that sight distance potentially.
And so you can't see it in this picture, but the stop ahead is farther the other way. It's pretty far up the road. Um, it's back there, it's basically almost in the intersection of one hundred and north.
Right there.
Right here, stop ahead.
And that's, you know, Cody and I visited about that too. See, you can also see the sign right there as well. Um, you know, that's giving you that stop ahead, you know, potentially looking at maybe trimming some of the trees along here to kinda make these signs a little bit more visible is, is an option. Potentially some more, you know, enforcement. I don't know if that's a good idea or not. But that's just kinda some of the ideas that Cody and I had talked about, you know. I mean, these are kinda some of the challenging things that we see in, you know, urban type areas everywhere. And one of the reasons that that stop ahead message is set back as far as it is is because of the, the other pavement markings in the intersection right here. So Cody and I did have kinda that discussion, cause I was curious as to why, cause the ones on, on two hundred south are even further back. They're the fire station.
Yeah. And so looking at this, one of the first things I noticed is that, well, are you going over to two hundred? I was looking at Center and Main for a second, but we can look at this too.
I just, I didn't realize there was stop ahead down here. I just, I didn't realize there was stop ahead down here.
Mm-hmm.
It is clear back at the fire station.
It's really far away.
Yep. And this one also does have, again, there's your sign right there. Um, I visited with our maintenance folks today too and we, we identified that the flashing stop sign up there's not working. Um, they are gonna get ahold of our electricians and see if we can get that working again.
Okay, 'cause it was working and then I, the other day I was like, I don't think that's worked in a long time.
Maybe they decided it didn't exist anymore as far back as that, warning you.
Kim, Kim's got a message in with our electricians, so Tyson Larson's his name, I, he's really getting back, getting back at everybody. So I'd anticipate, you know, probably the first of the week that he'll be back in touch with our maintenance folks to get this one going. And you can see we also added the other sign to the bottom of the stop sign, weren't telling people that the cross traffic doesn't stop.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, we really have done a lot of things at these intersections and that's why, you know, Cody and I are kind of really thinking, you know, maybe it's an enforcement thing that we need to be talking to you guys about having, you know, I don't know, we can, we can talk to UHP if we need to to try and get them to look at it a little bit more or if, if, uh, you know, Perron PD wants to help out a little bit there. I mean, we're, we're open to ideas and suggestions.
So last night at the, um, Forest Open House, you brought me the, the new, um, standards and there is a one that I really like that's called the special emphasis crosswalk.
Yep.
And so I don't know if we can pull that up or, the council members have it in front of them. It's basically like a diagonal line across the whole crosswalk. To me, it's pretty vis- it's pretty visual that you can tell there's something there. I mean, it's, it's definitely stronger, it's a stronger road marking. Um, but we talked a little bit about funding and who potentially could pay for that and, you know, what that would take to do. Um, I did notice that over at the high school, I mean, the elementary school where they have crosswalks, they do a version of this emphasized crosswalk.
Yes.
And so then I started trying to think about, could we do that everywhere we have a crosswalk? Can we just have a standard crosswalk that has the special emphasis markings on it? So maybe people start to recognize these aren't just lines, these are crosswalks.
So, you know, and I'm trying to help the cause, 'cause I, I live around here too, you know, and I got kids at the high school and the elementary school and stuff and, and, and I, and I pay taxes, you know, and, and I wondered, is it worth trying to maybe look at some enforcement things first before you start spending money on something that we, it might work, it might not, you know? 'Cause as we talked through this and I went and looked at some stuff and I was like, man, we, we already have this, all this stuff that, you know, we're looking at doing in place and it's obviously not working correctly.
Yeah, I mean, the one that, the one that was surprising to me is the one that's missing. And so we looked at that and we tried to kind of figure out why there were three and not the fourth, especially when that's where the kids go back and forth all day long to get their gas station stuff and, you know, that's the most common, I would think, if we did foot count, foot traffic counts. That crosswalk right there is the primary crosswalk that gets used the most. And the reason is, is that's our city road. So that isn't a U dot one to mark. That's our cities to mark.
So there's, there's your workaround right there. I told you we give you a little bit of a workaround. Not exactly, but there's something there.
That's okay, 'cause I, I'm gonna find a way to get that logo on the street.
Yeah, that's.
So there's one and, and, you know, I even talked to the prevention coalition, being that they have, you know, wanting to be more involved in the community and said, could we do like ram crossing with the logo, something where we know this is where the kids cross, we know this is their path, um, every day, back and forth. Even during school, you see the kids going back and forth, um, even when it's not lunch break. And so that was a thought is, is marking those. Um, so up on the, the one that goes, you know, from the mortuary over where the crosswalk guards stand, you can see the more, the stronger crosswalk indicating markings. And again, you know, that's right there where it's U dots, but we have an option to do one, um, there from the gym to the mortuary, from the bank to the school. I mean, there would be options to do that on our city roads. And Aldo's here, I asked him to be here as well tonight. I'm sure he'd rather not be here all night long, but, um, because I know he's thought about this as well and maybe would have some input on some things that we could work together on.
I was blaming him. Been hitting at, hitting at it all night long.
Um, so just, just something to, for the council to consider. It's like the twin movie, Matt.
It is.
Scaring up at your shoulders.
You would.
Let me sit down, Matt.
There is a stool.
There you go.
There you, there you go.
Now we don't have to move the mic when it's maxed.
Now it's not quite so awkward with everything. I hope so.
Not awkward at all.
Hope the internet can see. So anyways, just some thoughts to consider. If, if the council wants us to move forward with this. Move, move forward with this. Um, we are getting ready to do maintenance on the, the school crosswalks. We'll have those painted before school starts like we did last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and just brighten those up. So if it's something that, that the council would like to see happen and we can move forward if, if, if you need to see some pricing, I can get some quotes. Uh, painting of crosswalks is not something we do in-house. We contract that labor out to people that have the paint and the tooling and, and that can do that kind of work. Um, not saying we can't go buy that equipment and do it ourselves, but currently we, we contract that work out. Um, but yeah, if that's something that the, the council de- and decides we want to move forward with, then we're happy to, to push it in and into our work schedule and get that scheduled out and move forward with it.
Matt, can you, uh, can you address, on this di- diagram that we have, the center drawing of the special emphasis crosswalk?
Yeah.
Have they gone away from the perpendicular ladder to this cross, to this diagonal ladder?
Either option.
Either option?
Either option, yeah. So, so that's something else that I wanna point out too is if, you know, I gave you guys what our standard drawing is. Our standard drawings align with the MUTCD. If you get digging into the MUTCD, there's a heck of a lot more options. What I have given you guys is what we would maintain. So if you did another option that's above, beyond that, we would wanna do a maintenance agreement to where the city would have to maintain those. Which is, you know, when we got, when I recommended Colton Springdale and some of these other places that have done that because there are some maintenance things that go along with it and that's why, you know, I wanted you to talk to those folks to see what those.
And you wouldn't maintain the paint? You would only maintain the thermal plastic or whatever, the reflective plastic material or would you maintain the paint?
We would maintain the paint too, but our, our, our standard is thermal plastic. That's what we would prefer to see.
Sorry, Matt, can you talk into the mic? People online can't hear unless you do.
Okay, sorry.
I was trying to make room for Aldo.
Aldo messed it up. I know, he did. He just threw it all out of whack. 'Cause where, we've got some places where we maintain paint and I can. Yeah, so we would maintain the paint, but our, our preference is the thermal plastic, especially being in the area where we have as much snow as we do. The paint wears out.
And the thermal plastic has reflective qualities that paint doesn't, right?
No, the paint does too.
If it's the right kind of paint that has.
Kim, you're gonna have to come up.
Kim, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, come on down.
Oh.
And you gotta bring us honey.
I kept checking my phone to see if I got complaints and I didn't, so if we just got a complaint about Matt.
So when they paint, what they do is they lay the, they lay the layer of paint down and then you put the beads on top.
Oh.
So your paint's the same, it just.
Same reflective effect.
Yeah, same reflectivity. It just doesn't last as long. It's when we plow, we rub it off. I mean, if you go up on forty-three, it's art. I mean, it's gone by end of December and so.
So Matt, can they do different colors?
Nope.
Just white? How come?
Yep. So part of the. Part of that new MUTCD stan- MUTCD standard is getting away from the contrasting colors 'cause if we start getting weird colors in there, it has a tendency to blend in with the asphalt. So the MUTCD says no contrasting colors and we basically just said, we're just gonna, we just wanna do white 'cause it stands out best from the black pavement.
And the thermal plastic, Kim was telling me last night that he thought it was, how much per intersection, per stripe? Was it a couple of years back? It was five thousand dollars or something? And, and pretty sure that's gone up.
Yeah, it is expensive, but the life that we're seeing out of the thermal plastic is years instead of months. So it is a lot more expensive.
So that conversation, I mean, it really is what, who and when? And, I mean, we've been given some different options here. Um, Matt and Kim last night gave me some people that could give us bids on the thermal plastic. But if you're already in motion on those crosswalks with the schools and that's something we could move on. I mean, really, for me, it's what is the council's priority? I think it just bothers me that this has been brought to our attention quite some time ago. And for me, as a person living in the community on a regular basis, I get reminded, um, that this is something that I would like to see us move on if possible. And, you know, when I reached out to the two council members that are over these types of things, they, they were like, yeah, we would like to get involved in making sure we get this one across the finish line, because that's the thing, is we can make these really great decisions and we do and we get a lot of them done, but this is one that we just, it's been the, it's been just hard to figure out what we would do, how we would stencil the bricks. Some of the communities don't like them. Then when I found out they were slippery and Springdale's replacing theirs and, you know, I was like, well, maybe it's okay that we didn't do that, because I definitely wouldn't wanna create something that was a safety hazard in our attempt to mitigate a safety concern. And so that, uh, then, then Rochelle with her logo idea and I was like, well, that would be cool. And then I recognized, hey, on our city streets, if we did wanna throw down the logo somewhere or ram crossing or do some things that kind of built that team spirit, at least around the schools, I mean, we could have that option on our city streets. And so really, again, it's what do we wanna do? Who's going to do it and when are we going to do it?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so the, the other thing that Cody and I had talked about was, you know, if, if we wanted to make some of these improvements, U dot, it, you know, as long as it met what our standard is, we would come in and make those changes. I just don't know when it's gonna be with as tight as our budget is right now. So it could be next week, it could be next year. I don't know. It just kind of depends when we have the funding for that. Even though it's a small, in the big scheme of things, it's a small dollar amount, but we've, you know, seen the crunch just like everybody else. And so our budgets are extremely tight this year.
I asked, um, Tracy Munson today if it was a socks and underwear year for the U dot budget and he said, no, we're repairing our socks. We don't get new socks this year.
Yeah. Yeah, it's tight.
So I've kind of jumped out with my priorities of Center and Main and two hundred and Main. Um, I also think down by the high school, when we look at the Dairy Freeze Crossing, it's definitely improved, but I wouldn't mind seeing that with enhanced marking. Um, what is the council's, I mean, I feel like I've just been looking at it and talking to Matt, but I haven't heard back 'cause really this is what, this is what, this is on the agenda for tonight. What do you all think the priorities would be if U dot was going to help us or if we as a public works was going to get this figured out through? The people that are already gonna be out there in, or, um, refreshing our school ones.
And I have one other question too. You know, I was kind of talking to my oldest girl that goes to the high school, my wife, about this before I came over here. Are, are we concerned with the crossing in between the crosswalks, the students and stuff that are just? So my daughter pointed something out to me that I was like, I'd never thought of that. You know, she's thirteen going on thirty. If, if that's a concern and an issue, do you look at getting rid of the on har- on, on highway parking? Because you have the students that are parking there and they're just walking straight across and I go, hm, I'd never really thought of that before.
No, no, look at that.
We always discuss this, Mayor, but in one of the, the other meetings with that, the, what was it, the county, the safety, whatever. We were talking about mid-block crossings.
Mm-hmm.
And what to do, you know, it was up here between Cent- first this street and, uh, Center Street and of course down here at the school between First North and Second.
And I did follow up with that Safe Streets grant program that we did that, you know, big community process with and Dan was at the meeting about it a couple of weeks ago, probably sometime mid-July. And they ended up settling on a couple of projects that we are going to be part of, but they're not mid-block crossing and they're not crosswalk or intersection improvements. There's some other things that they, as a county, just settled on with the funding.
Yeah, they're gonna be doing lane striping on the outside of a lot of these roads and, and for us, it would be Old Highway ninety-one where there is no, like cars these days, uh, that, with the autonomous features and things like that, they're looking for the ro- the lanes on the road. And so on these regional roads where it's higher speeds, um, they wanna, they wanna put, um, basically a white line on the edge of the road and, and they also wanna put in some of those, uh, traffic, um, the, the, the speed signs that show the, the traffic speed and it shows your speed. They wanna put those in through the county in different places and add those lane things. So that's what they, that's what they're gonna apply for and we can piggyback on that. It'll be a county-wide thing and so we said, yeah, we'd do that as well. Um, we.
The likelihood of us getting that was the highest.
Well, what it is, is that can be an implementation grant that they can do right now, um, with the Safe Streets for all. You can do, you can do a planning grant and then you can turn around later and do an implementation grant. They're gonna do an implementation grant right now and we're able to piggyback on that. If we wanted to do what we're talking about, we'd have to go through a whole design thing first and do all that and then follow it up with the others, so.
Well, back to your question, Mayor, I'd say First North, Second North, Center and Second South. Those all need to be emphasized.
And I think you need one there on four hundred north and one hundred west, 'cause you get a lot of kids walking through there, the school.
Are you taking notes? Oh, there we go. There we go. Dial in on that section.
Well, didn't we talk about just all around the schools and that would be included when?
And I wondered where we talked about, um, where the ballfields are and people are crossing there. I've heard there's dangerous, a dangerous situation there as well.
Wouldn't that be part of all around the schools?
Yeah. So how many locations are we talking about? Are we talking about, we, maybe we just need to map this out after the meeting and decide? But do we wanna approach it as we, we are gonna do it ourselves or are we going to see if we wanna split this up and see if U dot can help us out with some of it?
I think we look at the, the options there, um, see, see the cost effectiveness of, of, 'cause would you maintain? Sorry, if you already discussed this, like, like we did in clear around the elementary schools, you don't gonna do those or just on the right of way?
Just, just in our right of way, on our road.
Right. So I think we look at, um, which you already do. We'll look at it. Let's map this out and c- do some cost effectiveness of what the thermal plastic is down versus paint. Um, and then I can get some costs come from Paradigm. They're the ones that are, have done our asphalt striping before in the past and throw out what it, it'll cost them to do that work and just, we can just chase down some costs on it and then bring it back and save.
Sorry.
Nobody.
I was gonna say one, one thought too with the changes is you'll need to get a cost for removal too on them if you're looking at changes 'cause they'll have to use a water blaster to get that thermal plastic up, you know, for making changes, so that'd be another one to look at as well.
All right. Is there any other discussion, anything else anyone wants to highlight or talk about or understand better from Matt? Because, I mean, he really was, if you wanna do some of those things, you could do them on your city roads. And so you might really take a look at that and see where we could do something, 'cause I do think that people would really like it. So no in the middle of the night painting then? Gosh, I was still looking forward to that.
If, if, if we see something pop up, I know we're, who to go talk to.
I know. You don't know me though. You don't know me.
Hey, I was, I was, you know, we, we definitely wanna work with you guys on this. It's just, you know, it's tough. Um, and so as Mayor and I, we were talking, like I says, we were trying to, I, I tried to give you some workarounds so that you can get some, you know.
And he asked me, do you think it's your locals that are blowing through your stop signs or do you think it's people coming through town? I think it's people coming through town. I told them our locals avoid those intersections. Like, we just stay away from them 'cause we know people don't stop and so. Yeah, I don't go that way. I go the back way. Yeah, but, and so when we talk about increased traffic and people, more people going up to Bryanhead, more people going through town for, you know, that aren't as familiar with our area, I just really wanna be sure that this isn't one of those things that we say we knew there was a problem and we knew we needed to do it and I wanna be sure we actually get this one done.
Matt, what about more, uh, lighted signage like some two hundred north, like the Dairy Freeze? You know, that sign they push the button and it flashes? You know, like here at this crossing, it, that, that's kids use it here at one hundred, maybe at Center or something.
Do you remember when we did the, the pedestrian study, if it warranted any more of those?
That pedestrian study was, the counts were so low.
Right.
It was like the weekend before Easter or something. I don't even remember what the time of year was, but those counts were so low. And we talked about doing counts again in the meeting we were in. Was that today? Or about doing more frequent counts and that that's something that is gonna be possible? It was, it was the meeting we had, um, about doing the study on the intersection, the seventy-five exit. That we do have, you, we're sending data around and then we were talking about the potential of more frequent counts because we do have things that are changing in our area. It wouldn't be every five to seven years again. It would be sooner.
Yeah, so I- Yeah, so I mean, I think Cody would probably want to have an updated study done to look at a few more things like that.
Mm-hmm.
And I can't remember if we partnered with the city or if we paid for the last one. I mean, we can figure all that stuff out if you, if you guys want to look at it.
How they do that? Is that just the line across the road counts or do they do some kind of other means of count?
No, no, they actually just count the pedestrians is what they do actually.
Mm-hmm. They had a person sitting there.
So they have somebody actually do?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, with a little clicker, count them.
Mm-hmm. It was kind of a chilly, off, kind of weird day.
Right.
And I was like, there's got to be more than three people that cross that road.
Which, yeah.
Oh, there were three and I was like, mm, not going to get anywhere with three. Okay, well, thank you. If there isn't any other discussion, we'll move on and we'll count on us figuring this out together and then getting something done as soon as possible. I think if we can, we might not get it done before school starts, but if we can get it done as close to around school, that would be, that would be great and especially if we can package it in with what's already being done over there, at least a couple of them, maybe the ones that we think are the most important. Okay, thank you. All right, we will move now to the discussion on open space parks and land use code recommendations. This did go to public hearing in Planning Commission, um, and now we are here to look at it.
And I apologize, um, I was not in Planning Commission, um, the day that we had public hearing, we, 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 Planning Commission heard it several times and then we, I mean, heard it, they discussed it several times. Went to Planning Comis-, I mean, it went to public hearing and, um, the Planning Commission sent it forward with a positive recommendation, um, without any changes to the way it was written. And, um, so that's what I have up in front of you now. Um, of course, this is, this is a, um, this is chapter fourteen, which is referring to subdivision requirements. This was a hot topic at the end of the AJM annexation.
And, you say, are you sure they didn't make any changes? I thought they did.
I wasn't there. I was told there were no changes.
I know Jamie and Shane were going back and forth about some things, so.
If there were, I, I'm happy to go back through and, and watch the whole thing and, and incorporate any of those changes.
I don't know. I just know they were, yeah, I thought they were.
John, you and I were there. Um, it was quiet.
Yeah, it was real quiet.
Yeah, but Jamie and Shane were having some discussions, so.
Well, three of you were there and I wasn't, so.
All right.
You tell me if you feel comfortable. I mean, obviously it's work agenda, um-
Thank you.
And we can talk through the details of what it is, um, the way it's written, um.
I was there. I don't recall any amendments. I remember much discussion, but Cali-
But didn't they have some discussion though? Or were they, did they correlate? I mean, did they agree on that discussion?
I thought they did, but I could be wrong, David. I'm as old as you are.
Okay. Okay.
I guess the, the question is, is, d- does the council want me to sum, where do, where, where do you want to go with it? You want me to summarize where it's at?
Yeah, I think so.
You, you haven't had this, um, I mean, it's been out there, but, um, so let me summarize it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so basically, everybody remembers AJM, everybody remembers the discussion with them and, 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 and we were debating about what we should have them required to do. We went around and around and around and finally decided that what we'd, we would require of them is whatever the result of this process was. And it would obviously be at the subdivision level to be required of anybody who comes in with a subdivision application, hence the timeliness of working on it expeditiously. Expediously? That's not a word. I apologize for my poor grammar. I'm a farm kid. What do you expect? Um, so the actual, um, code that we have been working with, the purpose of it is to ensure that new residential development contributes fairly to the provision of parkland and meaningful open space, scaled appropriately by size and zoning density and to support long-term recreation needs and community quality of life in Parwan City. Um, there is then a section on definitions that has been added to define some of the things in here and then we get into actually the requirements. We have the applicability. This section applies to all residential subdivisions of three or more lots. That's significant because it means that on a minor lot subdivision, there is not a requirement. On a larger than three lots, then there is some additional deviation of what is required. First of all, we have subdivisions that are ten acres or greater in gross area. The subdivider shall dedicate land for public parks of the gross area of the subdivision. Um, originally, as we first started to discuss it with the Planning Commission, it was a percentage, it was a set percentage regardless of the size of it. And as we talked around and around and around, the, the Planning Commission really kind of liked the concept of changing the requirement based on the density of the rural, of the real, of the residential zone. Be, the idea being that in a more, in a less dense R-one type zone, people have larger yards and so forth, so maybe you're, you don't need to preserve as much open space and/or parks. And the more dense the area, the more of a need to have a place for people to get out and stretch their legs and things like that.
I think that's what they, they were talking about, those percentages. I think they were okay with that.
Yeah, so-
They didn't, they didn't say, you know, we're going to present it to the city council as a, um, a positive recommendation. They just said in that, that they seem to like those percentages.
Okay. So are you saying they didn't make a recommendation for positive?
I don't think so.
I think they kind of worked through what those numbers would mean and then they were like, yeah.
We're good with that.
Good, mhm.
And- Yeah, what was the motion?
Uh, the motion was, uh, Shane Williamson moved to recommend the public open space subdivision requirements to the city council as presented.
Well, there we go.
To recommend it. So if they weren't positive, they wouldn't recommend it. So I think we'd just consider it a positive recommendation. Was it unanimous? Okay, so the actual percentages are thus. Rural Estates Zone, which is the most spread out, you have an acre per house. No open space dedication or fee in lieu is required due to the large lot sizes and low density. In R-one, R-one A and A-one, low density residential zones, subdivisions shall provide open space exactions equal to one point five of the gro- percentage, percent, sorry, of the gross area of the subdivision. R-two, medium density residential zone, subdivisions shall provide open space exactions equal to three percent of the gross area of the subdivision. And finally, R-three and high density, high density residential zone, including PUDs, MPDs, which is a master plan development, subdivisions shall provide open space exactions equal to one, or four point five percent of the gross area. So that's how they decided they liked it, was a different requirement on, on, by a, by a zoning density. And then, of course, we still have this whole ten acres or larger versus less than ten acres and I'll explain how that works. But before we get there, dedicated land must be reasonably, reasonably shaped, accessible by public road or trail, suitable for active or passive recreation. It must not be encumbered by steep slopes, drainage facilities or utility easements unless accepted by the city for park purposes. So in other words, you can't just pick four feet at the end of the property that's not accessible and say, there's your open space, there's your public park. It has to be actually functional and usable. Um, okay, now we have this concept of a fee in lieu of dedication. And the, I'll just, I'll just explain it. So under ten acres in gross area, this is a pretty small subdivision. This is the idea, we do want to preserve open space, we do want to have land that's dedicated, maybe there's a park on it, maybe it's a trail, something like that. But in these small subdivisions, by the time you take, let's say it's in a R-one area where one point five percent is required and it's a small subdivision, that may be a very small amount of property. May not be something the city wants to actually accept as deeded. Maybe it's twenty feet by twenty feet, right? I don't think Aldo wants to deal with maintaining a whole bunch of small, little odd parcels around on minor lot subdivisions, less than ten acres. So what we do is we say, a fee in lieu of this dedication shall be paid if it's under ten acres. The fee in lieu means that the, and then number two, the fee shall be based on a per acre value of land in area, in the area, and the amount of land would otherwise be required to be dedicated. And the amount of land, I don't know if I even read that right or if it's worded weird. Basically, they're going to have to do a fee in lieu of. If it's larger than ten acres, they have to dedicate land. Less than ten acres, it's a fee in lieu. We do allow at the city's option, a method that if, if they want to do a fee in lieu and it's larger than ten acres and the city agrees to it, they can do that. That's kind of the idea that we were dancing around with Alex Meisner. We're like, basically, here's a hundred and seventy acres, but it's totally right by our, our Valentine Peak Sports Complex. Rather than dedicating some pocket parks, how about they just put money into our system? That's the concept that we were debating, um, and, and we ended up backing away from that idea. This would basically let that happen.
So they could-
But ten acres excludes the less than three lots, three lots or less.
Yeah, three lots or less, that, that doesn't even apply and that's just right up at the start of the chapter.
Okay, so that doesn't need to be put in here because you've already spelled that out.
Yeah. This is under the hu- the topic of fee in lieu of dedication, so.
So with Alex, with that annexation, he could literally pay his way out of open space?
No. The way it's written, he has to dedicate land.
Okay.
But if he wants to ask us if he could do a fee in lieu of in, in exchange, then this is what it says. The fee, the city may allow a fee in lieu in subdivisions ten or acres or greater upon finding that there is sufficient parkland already available within half mile of the site or the dedication would result in unusable or fragmented open space. But it's at the city's option, not the developer.
Could you choose to split it?
Huh?
Half fee, half open space or something like you did some and the other percentage and a fee.
So Councilman Harris said, could you split it and do half and half, have them do this, have them do that? I mean, we would have to look at that and whether the wording is sufficient to do that or not.
Dan, could you do your math for a second?
Yeah, oh yeah, math, math, it's math.
So, I don't know, Alex is, i- is pretty simple. So get hit, tell me how much of land, open space he must have in, in this contract. How many acres of open space?
Okay, so that's a little bit hard because he has R-one and R-two in there.
Okay.
And you'd have to figure out the percentage of R-one and the percentage of R-two and do a weighted balance.
How about just, just, eh, just R-one? Close.
Okay.
Do R-one.
So R-one.
Oh, here we go.
And he was, I think it was a hundred and seventy acres.
Yes.
So you're going to take a hundred and seventy acres times one point five percent?
Yep.
So he would have to dedicate two point five five acres, which is the gross area of the entire thing. However, this is in the subdivision code and it will be applied at the application, which means it will be applied in phases because that's how subdivisions are applied for and built. So if he has a phase of bigger than ten acres, he would have to give us land for that ten acres. If he has a subdu-, if he has a phase that was nine acres, he could do a fee in lieu of. So theoretically, he could avoid affe- having to deed land the way it's written if he did nine acre, less than ten acre pieces at a time and went through it, right? Um, I don't know how you avoid that other than if it's a, um, like, like sometimes we'll make them do a master drainage plan when we know that there needs to be drainage, depending on the drainage, the way it works out. Like, for example, with the Meisner subdivision, the first subd-, the first phase that he puts in, he's going to have to design most of the infrastructure for the st-, for the, for the sewer, right? Because you have to have sewer flow on day one.
Mm-hmm.
So he has to put in, we're going to need a master plan for his sewer in order to prove the first phase. With parks and open space, I don't know if that's, I don't know how there's any way to do that other than a large enough development that it's a master planned development and then it's, then it's easy.
So is the retention pond they were planning and putting?
Same thing with storm drain. Same thing with storm.
And that's not open space?
That's not open space unless we were to allow it. But this specifically says that it wouldn't be allowed, I think maybe if they pro- came to the city and proposed, yeah, but we're going to literally turn this thing into a park and it's also going to double as, you know, there's going to be grass and sprinklers and all this, but it is also going to accept storm water. But just to dedicate a chain link gravel pit that takes storm water, this specifically doesn't allow that the way it's written. Okay.
So, Dan, what, uh, why were these different percentages derived? Why wasn't there just a flat one?
It started flat, Dave. The Planning Commission decided that flat maybe wasn't the best approach since there's different densities and therefore different need for it. There is, there's some precedent when we looked at other cities, um, a lot of other cities, they, they, they only make the requirement once you get into a high density type situation.
But that neighborhood, whatever you want to call it, isn't going to be the only utilization of that open space.
Agreed.
Or needed or whatever. So I, I don't like those percentages.
I'm just telling you, that's where the concept of the density, the percentage is taken.
I think it should be a flat percentage.
I mean, there's, there's a million different ways to say what fair is. And in one way, you'd say fair is that everybody deals with the same exaction. And another way, fair is density based.
You're going to use that word on me again, exaction, extraction, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, exaction is the technical term of something that we require them to give us upon getting their permit.
But there's more than just the need of that particular area. I think it should be an overall percentage.
I think there's also a, um, part of the fairness equation of the different density is when you build a larger, more open density type subdivision on a, on a cost basis per home, and generally that's, that's how they make it work is, is how many homes or how many lots they're going to sell. Um, the infrastructure per mi- per home is a lot more expensive. Um, that's why developers always want higher and higher density because that's what makes projects pencil. So nowadays, um, quarter acre lot subdivisions are, from a development standpoint, extremely expensive to put all that in. Plus they have yards, maybe the needs are less. So I think it's, it's, I'm not, I'm not justifying it. I'm just saying, um, the more density you're giving them and the more, the more profitability you're giving that subdivision, you're also now expecting a higher exaction and, and forcing them to reserve open space for health and, you know, safety and stuff like that. Not safety, but just help.
No, I, I get it, but I don't agree with it, so. Cause I know it's like when they propose, I mean, I mean, maybe it's just irrelevant, but they proposed to give that, that parkway strip, that walkway strip or trail strip that like John likes to talk about. And then you figured it out, that was a half acre. I, I thought that was a slap in the face.
Shall I continue with the way it's written?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
No, no, no. This is why we're here for. Um, so we're under the concept of a fee in lieu of, well, how do you calculate the fee? Fee calculation, the amount of the fee shall be calculated as follows, the fee shall be- The fee shall be equal to the fair market value of the amount of land that would have otherwise been dedicated as determined by a standard per acre land value table established periodic and periodically updated by resolution of the city council. Um, a percent appra- a recent appraisal submitted by the developer and accepted by the city. Those are two options, right? So, the, the, the idea and the concept is that we would have a table, and there's an example of that, I believe, at the end. Yep. Assumed land value per acre, um, and land, there is different value in land that is, that is, of different densities. The idea is that we would have some sort of a study done and put it in our fee table, and it would need to be updated. And it would need to be based in, in, um, in some sort of study that's factual. But this does give the option that, that a, that a developer could, could present an appraisal and say, I think the city's number is way off, and could give us an appraisal. And if we say, yeah, actually it looks pretty good, we could accept it. That's kind of the-
We have to watch that big thing.
That's the concept that, that's here. Um, the required land area shall be based on the percentage established in this section applied to the gross area of the proposed subdivision, in other words, it's before roads, right? It's gross area. And if a developer disputes the land value set by the city, the developer may submit an independent appraisal for review and final determination by city council. So, you guys get the final say.
Can't we get, like, the county to give us appraisal? Cause don't they appraise land?
No.
No?
So, the county will put a tax value on property, um, they do mass appraisals. They don't, other than if you call the county appraiser to give you a, an estimate because he's a, he's doing you a favor, they won't give us a, a really good number. But for the city, they may give us, the city, a number to help us. But it wouldn't be the same thing as getting a, an appraisal done by a commercial appraiser.
So, that would be on the developer's dime?
Well, the way it's proposed, the city would actually have, would have a table to start with, and that would be the default. And need to be updated.
And that table would be updated yearly?
As, as-
So, things that-
We update our fee schedule yearly, so we would need to, th- this is an administrative burden-
Ooh.
-to do this and potentially even spend money to do it right. But if you're gonna require a fee in lieu, you gotta establish the fee somehow. You can't have one without the other.
I'm, I'm still just trying to figure out this fee in lieu of, if it's over ten acres. Just hypothetically, if you have fifty acres-
Yeah.
And you're putting in two hundred homes, one acre with our rule done right would be, how many homes in R one?
Theoretically, four.
Okay, and how many?
Before roads.
Okay, and how many with R two? This isn't a test, you can-
Eight.
Okay, so, eight homes in lieu of, in that acre, that property's worth, well, I know this is a example, but who would make that judgment call for the amount of money one acre in a subdivision would be worth?
We would. So, here's, here's this concept.
May.
Here's the fee in lieu of calculator table. Did you say me? Scott's volunteering?
The may, right?
Oh.
May, right, the city will have the discretion whether to accept-
Right, but, but it, but then we go straight to the table.
Yeah, right.
We, we don't negotiate at that point. We like you, we don't like you, we don't like you, so we're gonna make you pay more. No, it would go straight to the table. So, this is, this is, this is the way the table works. Remember how R one, let's just go with R one, quarter acre lots, is one point five percent is the, is the exaction. Now, we have an assumed land value per acre. That number, let me, let me put it this way. We don't wanna pass an ordinance, I know the planning commission moved this forward. It's not ready for an ordinance.
Right.
Even if you like it word for word, and by the way, Larry's here. Larry has submitted some proposed changes and stuff. But we wouldn't wanna appro- approve it word for word until we actually did that study in the first place anyways and had some numbers. These are some theoretical numbers-
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, of thirty-five thousand assumed value per acre. Um, you, you multiply that by the percentage and that tells you that it is point zero one five acres. Therefore, the fee in lieu of-
Five hundred and twenty-five.
Is five hundred and twenty-five times thirty-five thousand. Does that make sense? Per acre. So, on an eight acre subdivision, you do an eight times five hundred and twenty-five. Anybody wanna do the math, four thousand, forty-five hundred bucks?
Five twenty-five times eight, forty-two hundred.
There you go. So, that's an eight acre subdivision in R one, assuming that land value equates to forty-two hundred dollars. In lieu of dedi- in lieu of giving us some land. So, that's how that fee calculation works. Now, in an R three, now you're gonna go up to two thousand twenty-five dollars per acre because both the percentage went up and the assumed land value per acre went up. So, this is why the most important thing of this table is just to look at the right side of it and you can see what the fee in lieu of per acre is. So, with, with the Alex Meisner, it would be the weighted average of those two. Call it seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Ooh, remember how we were bouncing around numbers? Let's see where that comes out.
There we go.
So, let's assume a weighted average of, let's call it seven hundred and, no, we got, we gotta go higher than that, about eight hundred. Eight hundred dollars per acre times-
One seventy.
Hundred and seventy acres, it's a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, if we allow a fee in lieu of.
If, yeah.
Or if they did nine acre phases at a time.
Who would let them do that?
When, when they come in with a, so, now we're to the subdivision code.
Okay.
They come in with phase one, as long as phase one has access and they have temporary turnarounds at the end of streets, there, there's a, there's rules for a phase and as long as it complies with our streets' master plan and as long as the utilities all function, we're gonna administratively approve their phases, as long as they fit city code. We're not gonna say your phase needs to be bigger, or your phase is too big, or something like that. That's just not what we do when it comes to administrative subdivision oversight.
So, with Meisner's, you got a hundred and thirty-six thousand to, um, and then he wouldn't have to put in, he wouldn't have to-
But that's assuming those land values are right.
Yeah.
And what are we talking about? Are we talking about a, a finished lot land value or a raw land land value? Like, like, so, the assumed land value's a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, wha- what do you think we should think about? A, a finished land value, or?
Well, look at it this way, you're requiring an exaction, thi- this is important, this is the important philosophy behind this. You're requiring a, an, an exaction of land dedication. We have a park impact fee. You can't have these, you can't get the same blood out of the turnip twice. The park impact fee is for us to develop new parks. The land exaction is for them to dedicate land. So, I would think the fair thing would be raw land because, because their, their option is to give us raw land.
Yeah, it has to be raw.
Therefore, the fee in lieu of should be for raw land.
It has to be.
So, what is the value of raw land? That's the kind of study that we would do. Cause each home that gets put in, we collect an impact fee of sixteen hundred dollars and thirty-one, sixteen thirty-one or something like that. That's our park impact fee from every new home built. We have to take that impact fee money and we have to make improvements to parks relative to new growth. We can't maintain our parks, we can't replace equipment with it. We have to, we have to do new development of parks, right? We could take that raw land that they gave us and we could then put new equipment on it with park impact fees.
You can put new equipment on parks?
Huh?
With the impact fee, you can put new equipment in parks?
You can, you can, it has to be related to growth. You can't improve the level of service with impact fees.
Okay.
You could expand a park. The re- we used park impact fee money for the pool because we ex- literally expanded the size of the pool so we could have more people in it. We couldn't have just made an improvement to the pool with park impact fee money.
Okay.
Impact fee mon- impact fees are highly litigated and you gotta be careful with them, so.
So, using this calculation that we have in front of us, I mean, that's really a good place to, to look at that and see what that means in real life.
Yeah.
Do we think that's commensurate? Do we think that's the right amount? Do we think that's low? Do we think that's high, you know? It's really-
And do we trust ourselves, potentially, if we were to get sued-
Right.
-to say that we feel like it's good? Like, do, do you wanna assign staff to go out and look into the real estate market? Cause, cause it's what we would do if we were to do it ourselves, is we would say, okay, what's, what's raw land in an A one that's undeveloped? And try to get a few and, and look at some com- some comps, right? Um, and is it what the advertised price is or what recently sold prices are? And then same thing with R one and R two and R three. Or would we hire somebody to give us an update?
Depends on location of land, to be worth more or worth less regardless.
Totally does, location is gonna be dependent.
Regardless of zoning.
And we're gonna have to come up with a, something we could use citywide in any location, an average. Or the option is you get rid of the fee in lieu of and you say, everybody has to dedicate land and we end up with some small pieces. There's, that's problematic as well. Or you say, if it's a small enough subdivision, you're just exempt. Large enough subdivision, you gotta give it to us. Then you got the phasal prosen- problem that John is bugged about. Right?
Sorry.
They just do small enough phases, they never dedicate anything.
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of like scamming the city, that's how I feel.
(laugh)
You know?
So, you can see, it's, it's challenging. Th- there's no, like, perfectly elegant solution if we go down this road. And a lot of cities have probably debated it and just said, okay, we're just gonna make it happen whenever we're doing high density stuff. Um, I don't know.
I wanna research that some more, that's for sure.
So, let me finish, let me finish, um, the rest of the code, the way it's written, after we get done with the fee in lieu of. There's a requirement for additional open space in high density or clustered developments. Okay, this is what we're talking about, planned unit developments or master plan developments. This is pretty typical in most larger cities. Now, think high rises, think, we're not gonna have any high rises, but we could have some PUDs. We have one that's, has applied, hasn't finished its process. This requires additional private or common open space. Meaning, this is not property that's deeded to the city. This is them reserving their own property so that it is, there is, there's just this additional, you gotta reserve some space for your people to, to enjoy it. And, and typically, so, private, private open space, they don't really use the term open space, they call it common space, but they have public common space and they have private common space. Regardless, we're requiring them to do that. And this, it bumps up to an additional five percent of the gross site area. Must be centrally located or otherwise accessible to the majority of the lots. Must be maintained by an HOA, Owners Association or sim- similar mechanism. Must be improved with amenities appropriate to the scale of the development. Example, play areas, trails, gardens, seating areas, landscape green spaces. So, that's another concept, whether you like that. And credits or adjustments, where trails, natural buffers or floodways are preserved as part of a larger city identified open space network, a city may credit these areas towards the requirement, open space, if they serve a recreational or connectivity function and if they are improved and accessible to the public. So, if they wanna put a trail through their thing, and we could say, you know what? We're gonna, we're gonna count that. Thanks, we had an open, we had a master plan and this master plan trail went through your place and you, you, you comp, you did that, we're not gonna, we're not gonna double exact you, we're gonna let that count. So, this allows a city to give credits when they do that. Um, and finally, administration, land use, land dedication proposals and fee calculations shall be reviewed by city staff and approved through the subdivision review process. That's a given, as long as they're just following the, the, the rules, cause that's when that would be done. Fee in lieu of payments shall be placed in dedicated parks reserve fund and used only for acquisition and improved or improvement of public parkland under open space. In other words, we don't get to just throw that money they give us into any old place, we have to keep it in parks. So, that's it, that's the way, and then it was just the, the, the fee table.
You, there's a yellow mark on there, what was that?
I just highlighted that while you were, you were bringing up that thing. It says that it can't be encumbered by steep slopes drainage facilities. And, and you had brought that up. So, I just highlighted it because I was gonna say something about it. You guys wanna think about it, come back and work on it again next time? If we make any major changes, we probably oughta have a second public hearing. I'm, I'm hearing Dave and Rochelle say they wanna look at it.
Me too.
I think we need to.
Oh, definitely.
Okay, I will not write an ordinance and bring it to you then.
So, it'll come back on work and then from there, we'll know if we need to have a second public hearing.
Yep.
Perfect. Good direction, and I know this is really important to all of us, like, this is one that, it's like short-term rentals. We have some of these that I think we really need to not rush on and this is one we need to really not rush on. I mean, I looked at that-
I'm gonna give it back.
-that number and I'm like, that's not a very big number. Hundred and thirty-six thousand, can't hardly do anything with that anymore. All right, so, wow, we are just cruising through this agenda. Um, we did end up (laugh).
I think you're the only one that feels that way.
I was like, not really.
Slow cruise.
We skipped the procurement policy discussion, we are going to talk about that next time. So, we're moving to reports, updates, old business follow-up by elected officials and staff and we will start with, I just wanna keep our pace and we'll start with Councilmember Burton.
Okay, um, plan zoning, course met on the thirty-first and they had their public hearing, which we've already talked about and, uh, made the recommendation for this, uh, public open space. So, we've already dealt with that. Um, I just wanna put a shout out that the water recharge project is steaming forward. They're, they've been over by my house and been, you oughta watch them in action. That is a well organized outfit. I mean, they're, they're doing good. And, uh, let's see, Aldo, the, I was just gonna say that the cemetery fence is in progress according to the, the volunteers and you're, it's, you're working on it. I mean, it's a work in progress, it's just not sitting there, so.
Hey, while we have Aldo here, and this is under your area as well, Dave, um, Aldo has bad news that is gonna become budgetary. I was gonna have him come up at the time, but he's already standing at the mic. Maybe you can tell us your bad news, Aldo.
Uh, so sorry, we had to pull the canyon well, we have some issues with the main canyon well up there, um. The well has had this issue with the mass a couple of times. Um, three deposits, whatever you wanna call it, up in- up in between the barriers and the shaft of the oil tube, to where it's well is back trending, the up shaft goes in, and it'll go up, and basically backfolds itself. Um, and we- we're oil tubes up off the moors. Uh, anyway, long story short, we had to pull that well out. Uh, it is out currently right now, we're running back off the three hundred feet swell, so drinking water is fine. And we're not- we're not gonna dry, unless every well goes down. Um, the molds have been sent off to right to shoot, to take a look at those, right as well as that ground, we do, uh, maintenance on that. Um, we're trying to send the molds down, make sure nothing happens to those, uh, well, we'll send the camera down as well, see if there's any holes, casings, or anything else that could- that could lead us to, you know, better than that we may. But that's the good well maintenance, what we have to grab right now, so take a good look at everything, uh, make sure we can stop. Uh, it's going to become a, like, a badness and cemetery item, you know, it's a big well, but it's not.
Yeah, take my word for that.
So later, we'll go down to the well company, and also to chat about orders. Um, so, uh, I ain't trying to give numbers right off the bat, though, but we- we wouldn't be public any, to under range, by the time. But finally, that's the, uh, that's just well, well maintenance, we're, uh, uh, also, we're gonna look at, uh, ways that we can run as well differently. Uh, with the, the structure, what we talked about, and talked about that, we've been discussing. Uh, hopefully, build that building, that's jumped right to the, you know, the part of it, make it really, kind of, go back to the, you know, time, and it's not very small. Probably some of that, uh, probably, that's, that's, that's medical, that's what cost was, but it changed towards some of that, in that way as well, we're gonna, throughout the life here. So, that's totally gonna help improve it, if we build that, and we build it properly, and operate it, so, uh, also, cooperate about, uh, structure. Uh, so, that adds up to, uh, day to day, helping, um, just the, the well being out of the ground, you have to look probably about four years, right, to get it around. Also, work as quickly as we can, with the, the well, comfort, uh, get it turned around, back in the ground. So, that's, uh, that's, uh, that's, uh, well, well, that'll give you a lot of work, and it's, uh, uh, right today.
And can you give us an update on, um, we've been working with, uh, Bone Collins on the water treatment facility, the preliminary engineering, um, the state's really wanting us to evaluate whether we could rehab our springs, and bring them back online without treatment. Um, now I'm just talking, I'll just let you jump in as you need.
So, we've done some preliminary work with Bone Collins, we went up to the spring site, some of that area has changed from, geography has changed from, right at fires, flooding, and whatnot, kind of, we've moved around the springs. So they're suggesting that we look at that, um, to the date, um, we need to talk to the state, discuss that, hey, that we've already tried to rehab that before the past. If they want to just to look at that more, future rehabbing that, um, like that, which is that, that just puts it on the schedule. So, we- we were trying to hammer down some of the state requirements, if we go to rehab that, there'll be a certain amount of testing that we have to follow, and a longer timetable to put those springs back into service.
Potentially outside our funding window that's approved.
Yep, so there's- there's this, there's a piece of stuff that we'll bring back to council, with some options, saying, hey, we can go this route, which may be cheaper, or maybe not be cheaper, because we extended it out by three, three years, and I mean, you know, just- just a question, uh, council, I can make some decisions on that.
And we've asked Bone and Collins, don't just, like, give us, like, there better be a pretty good likelihood, and we're asking them to give us their best advice, once we get done giving all- getting all the information collected. There better be a pretty dang high likelihood of- of following this route. If it takes us two years of collecting data, and we're outside our funding window, and then find out we still have to do treatment, we're gonna be two years behind, two years more in inflation of costs, have to reapply for funding, like, there better be a real good chance. If the- if that happens, that would be awesome. W- you don't have to build a m- multi-multi-million dollar treatment facility. Instead, we just bring our springs back online. But there has to be a good chance.
Mm.
Yeah.
Some filtration for the turbidity and chlorination, yeah. Yeah. So that's being detalked about, and it's- we're- we're taking the time to go slow.
Yeah, and meantime, the, I probably did before, we purchased, um, uh, sampling data, uh, for sampling equipment, so we can collect data daily on the springs, rather than, it'd be stuff, have to, uh, stuff to help catch that. You know, we could do a flood, or we're checking daily, we might be that water, you know, that makes it really trying to help get as much data as we possibly can, help that efficient. Um, while we're talking about wells, we- we have been running the four bay well. Uh, the irrigation water coming out of the empty is, they're holding up currently, they have to put on, on turn. So we are, the town is holding a lot of water outside of the water inlet of, uh, time, and so, that's not, you know, we should, um, have to, you know, hold it. But that's nothing big, that's, uh, for years to come. So, but we are just, though, the council is aware, we have been running that well for last week or so, to help us recover, carry the whole package.
Is that being pumped directly into the four bay?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, well, sticking to the board.
Okay.
Um, it's not a, not only thing, we're trying to limit that, or not, you know, pump water, and just watch it spill, or just go away, or something. We're trying to keep that operating on, where it's safe to shut that now, let the- let the users use it, and then also catch it back again, before we, before we turn back on. Um, and it's being washed by, by checking that daily, most of the times throughout the day, on the screen. Um, we're still taking a lot of sediment coming on and flooding that stream, um, so we're working different ways, uh, have acid washing that, or put some, uh, mechanical string on there, if it's good, taking time. We can take lines and, uh, back and forth, so we don't wanna see that water running down, take it out. Um, if we do take a lot, phone call, not that, there's, there's definitely people that, that, which is good, it's great, we wanted to take, you know, about that.
So Aldo, a question, is that racetrack well, could it ever be used culinary?
Yes, it can be.
If need be.
That was something I was discussing with my crew, uh, just recently, uh, to go ahead and pump that, flush it, uh, flush it out a little bit, and, uh, let's get it all towards, and flush it.
Run it down to my yard and irrigate it, irrigate it. Yeah.
Um, just to make sure we have a, a backup that, well, we can, 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 we can.
Sure.
Mm.
Also, fire that up.
Smart.
Make sure we have some, uh, 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 something by the line, you know, why we, 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 we.
And on that, uh, canyon well, it, you say the casing has some questions, you're gonna find out when you camera it?
Yeah, there's- there's some gravel that's been getting in that well, um.
Hey, we got some screens that are opened up.
Okay. That's why I was gonna ask, are you gonna look at that option? Okay. It does, and it's not a guarantee. Yep, yep. Yeah. Yeah, you have to be careful with that swedging, cause it's not, uh, not guaranteed, mm-mm. Yep, or you'll shift the casing, or, yep. Had a lot of experience with that.
So, we'll, once we get eyes down that hole, we'll, we'll know better, so.
Okay.
Um, like, like Councilmember Burton said, uh, we just started moving right along the path, uh, at, um, um, uh, just, so, I'm sure there'll be questions with the council, and I'm prepared. We've been through the parking lot, and we've got, we're ready to go make that. And so, that parking lot, we wrapped up at first, and next week, we'll take you to get on with, with that city. We've also jumped from the fence where we stopped, the side of the fairground, over to the other side of Seven Street. So we're not even touching Seven Street, or the entrance to the fairground, until after we've got, um, so, we will be working along the end of the highway, but, uh, we're trying to get down there as quickly as we can, to even pass that section before we're fairground.
And they just finished the crossing on Two Hundred North in front of my house.
Yep.
So that won't interfere there.
I'm gonna try to hurry, get some, some, hurry after all, patching in there, and we'll probably, we'll, 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 that'll help, give us, we can set these, you know, people in there, and, and, you know, I don't think we're able to patch. So, um, that project is moving along pretty quick, we got, uh, uh, Red Sea, we're coming off of here in the south. So, talking with the crews today, we should start around the eleven, with current vision on that structure coming out, we'll start at the bottom, have a further structure.
Do they have two crews on that one? Three hundred?
I think it's only gonna be one, and let this crew burn out pretty quick, we can, all the way to the.
Moves over. No. They're an impressive outfit. Yeah. Yeah. Well, thank you, I was very interested in all that, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Aldo.
Thanks, Aldo. Are you wrapped up?
I think Aldo took care of it, I'm just happy about that.
Alright. Thank you. Councilmember Downey?
Uh, this is just a point of interest, to bring back some old memories. About the Monroe Fire, it burned twelve transmission power poles. And they've been out of power, three thousand people have been out of power since yesterday.
Hmm.
And.
In what city, Monroe, or in the county?
Cuscherum, and all of- Bicknell, and all of those in there, they're all out. And it's getting really close to Monroe, I heard, in that. And yesterday, they had to pull the firefighters out, because the wind that the fires create was too erratic, and they had to pull everybody out. So just keep them in your thoughts and prayers, because it's- it's really bad. And this Saturday is the Run Your Buns, and we have two hundred and thirty-nine participants and a hundred volunteers. And I think that's a- I think that's a really good showing.
Can I interject on that?
Sure.
Um, I was talking with Jet on Tuesday, and they've had some of the volunteers back out, so they are still nee- in need of volunteers to help with the marathon, if you are, if you know of anybody, or if you're able, get in contact with Jet, and.
I didn't have a choice.
I was told to, you know, (laugh) I was told to be on sta- on Station Nine at six AM, so.
I thought you were gonna say you're running.
Huh? I'm on some street.
Oh, I thought you were gonna tell us you're- you were running it.
Oh, no, no, no. No, because she heard her angle, I mean, to say hi to me, at Perrin's birthday.
And they're gonna have hamburgers. They're gonna have hamburgers at the finish line, so that's where Run Your Buns off comes from.
Three years. And the signs are awesome, that they have made up, and they're funny, they're great.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I- I have, uh, nothing, I will have things, at the next meeting, some things that are happening, with appreciation to the employees.
Thank you. Is that it?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Your turn.
Okay, so, I attended a theater board meeting on, I think it was Tuesday. Um, they went over, um, how well Little Women did, when they had that play there. They made over twenty-one hundred dollars in profit from that, that was after, like, their rights, and, um, just all of the expenses. So they really were happy about that. April is all booked out, it's completely full, mostly with the homeschool, uh, kids, and co-ops, and things like that.
You mean August?
No, April. No, I wrote April, but she probably meant August. Yeah, she probably did mean August. Um, they have started, and I don't know if this has been a thing, but they said that it's on the fee schedule now, where they're renting out props and costumes. They're charging people to rent them now, like, if they're leaving Perrin. So like, if you're doing a play at the Aladdin Theater, or the high school, they're not charging you to use the props or the costumes for that. But if there are people in theater and stuff like that, I guess, come over quite a lot and rent. Um, they have a lady from Paraguna, and she wants to direct a play in October, so they're going to start holding auditions, and Jet will start advertising for that, they'll hold auditions in August. And then they wanna do the play the first week of October, which is a really quick turnaround, but she's really gunghole, and she's just got a lot of spunk, and I think, I think she'll make it happen. And then they're also going to be doing the Haunted Theater again, which is my favorite, um, the twenty-third of October through the thirty-first. And then, going on right now is still the ones on this island, um, and that play goes through August second, and it's, I think they have three casts this time, because there were so many students that came, which is so fun to see. A lot of those kids I know, and don't know, too, but.
Yeah, kids did a good job.
Yeah, it's a really cute play, it's really great.
I went, I went, I went.
And then I did wanna mention, and I probably should've been mentioning this through the entire summer, and I just, I was down at the park, um, for some school-related things, and the food bank is still coming for families with children. And August fifth, so this Tuesday will be the last day that they're going to be doing that, and I'll share the flyer again on social media. But it's free summer meals, they provide seven lunches and seven breakfasts, breakfast, I can't even plural that. Um, your kids do have to be present for them to pick up, but when I was there, I maybe, it wasn't a very big turnout, and they had a lot of food that they just loaded back in, and I'm sure they went other places and did that. But I was kinda surprised at the low turnout of that, so, um, come on, guys, it's free food. And it looked like it was good food, too. And so that's, and then you talked about the marathon, and, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two RFPs that are out right now, um, the RFP for the airport fixed based operator, um, is due this Friday. We have received two so far, um, we're mix- hop- hoping that we'll receive a couple more. Um, we also have an RFP out, this one, um, will surprise you, but we needed to jump on it, so we'll- you guys will make the award, um, as you do, but you're- this is the first time you're hearing about it, and- and that is for our independent auditor. Um, Hinton Burdick, this last year, was at the fifth of their five-year engagement. For some reason, I was thinking there was th- that, and it gets weird with the fiscal year, for some reason, I thought this upcoming one was their fifth year, and it turns out, they just finished their fifth year. And so, um, without getting into much detail, um, we felt like it would be better to put it out to bid. Um, that's the best practice anyways, and so, that'll be due at the end of next Friday, and we'll- we will award that in the next city council meeting.
Can Hinton Burdick put in?
Yeah, they can put in, um, there is no hard and fast, nothing in state code. It's a good rule to mix up your auditor from time to time. Um, they look- they look at different things, they hold us accountable, y- you can get too friendly with them. I think we've only had Hinton Burdick for five years. Did we have him before that, Kelly? We've had him for a while.
Oh.
So, um, and you- you develop friendships, and, you know, it is what it is, but it is a good pr- best practice to mix it up from time to time anyways. But if- if they are the only option or the best option, you know, there's nothing that says you can't use them, but anyways. So that is out for bid. They have to be a- they have to be on the state's approved list, so there's not that many, um, firms that can actually do it. But there are a few firms locally that do it, and I actually have received already one bid that wasn't Hinton Burdick so far. So, will it, hopefully, have at least two, if not, um, three or four. Um, bad news just keeps coming, uh, this time from the pool. Um, we did not allocate a lot of budget for capital items, and, um, in this year's budget, thinking that we should be good for a while. Um, so far, we've had one of the two water heaters that has gone out. We need to replace water heater, I got a bid to replace both of them, because they were put in at the same time, they get a lot of corrosion down in there, where they have chlorine near them and stuff. And, um, the other one is, I'm sure, gonna go out very soon. And I got a- I got a bid back that kinda had a little bile come up in my throat when I heard it, so I thought, maybe we should replace them ourselves, I don't know, looking at that. But the main pump that circulates the water went down. They were able to, um, get it running again, but it's gonna go out anytime, so we need to replace that. That's a single point of failure, we lose the pump, we shut the pool down, so, we- and that pump is old, it's been there for quite some time. Um, that's gonna be about seven grand. They were able to, um, get it running again, but it's gonna go out any time, so we need to replace that, that's a single point of failure, we lose the pump, we shut the pool down, so, we, and that pump is old, it's been there for quite some time, um, that's gonna be about seven grand, um, that's an emergency, we need to get that replaced. Unless you wanna risk running through the end of the season, I would rather just get it replaced myself, because we know we have to replace it. Um, and we had the front door, the wind caught the front door, first of all, we never replaced the front doors when we rehabbed the pool, they had rust at the bottom, we put new kick panels on them, well, the wind grabbed one, shattered the glass, and they're old custom doors, so I have gotten a bid from, uh, Jones Paint and Glass, they're going to, they've given us a bid for doing it less than their cost. First, they said to donate, because they thought it was something different, when they found out what it was, they're like, okay, we can give it to you at less than cost, but we are gonna have to, and commercial doors are just, when he gave me the bid, I was like, I thought you said that was less than cost, and he goes, that is less than cost. So, um, we're gonna have to do an, an amendment to the pool budget. We can't leave the door boarded up, we gotta replace the water heaters, and we've gotta replace the pump, so, and what I'm telling you is, I'm gonna move ahead and do these things, we're gonna have to adjust the budget. So, everybody go, go with that, I, I told, I told Shelby, I said, let me at least warn the city council before we start spending more money than we have budgeted.
Oh, she talked to me, when I, sometime this week, I've been at the school, and she's like, Dan talked to you about the pool, and I was like, no, what's going on, and she laid it out, I was like, cause she was like, why isn't on the agenda, I was like, I don't know.
Cause I was just gonna talk to you and it, it updates. There's nothing to vote on, we can't adjust the amendment, we can't do an amendment without a public hearing.
Those water heaters are just for the dressing rooms and.
Water heaters are just for the hot water, not for the pool.
Yeah.
They're inside the building, but showers, sinks, um, also now, the, the, in the, um, in the, uh, concession stand, and so, yeah, we're down one water heater. Um, by the way, when we order water heaters, I think we're just gonna look at installing them ourselves with our building maintenance, we're gonna have to replace the one in this, in this building as well, I've been talking about that for a while. It is popping and grounding and moaning and, um.
Dan.
We've seen it's near end of life.
What happened to that?
Usually they split within two, too much longer after that, yeah, go ahead.
What happened to that, to the funds that we had appropriated to replace that pump years ago? And we set it aside, and then, in case.
Anything we do, we have to, we have to put it in this year's budget in order to spend it?
So that, that doesn't carry over.
No.
Cause we set those aside, like, five thousand, I remember, just emergency to replace that pump.
Um, I'd have to check and see in our capital projects fund, if we have money that was earmarked for that, but it would still have to have been appropriated.
Mm-hmm.
From that fund balance, and we, I know we didn't appropriate anything for it this year.
Okay, cause it was there, and I didn't know if it carried over, so.
Okay, no, it isn't in the, it isn't in this year's budget, I know that, so.
Well, I know it's not in this year's, but I didn't know where it was.
Okay, while I'm telling you bad news, looks like we've lost a motor in one of our police trucks, we, we don't have a con- confirmation of that, but, yeah, we got a motor that's knocking bad, so, we're gonna be playing musical trucks. Luckily, we have, we're about ready to get two, two of the new ones online, we'll see whether it makes sense to repair it, if it is the motor or not, but anyways. Yeah, the, the, the little fairy that has avoided us, the, the darkness fairy that, that hits us with.
What else are you gonna tell us?
Yeah, no, no, the rest of the news is good, um, Main Street Bridge, uh, we had a meeting today, um, ninety, ninety percent design, I think every UDOT employee on the, in the state was online, and, um, things are moving along. Um, luckily, we are, we, we're, we're not all the way through the cultural on that, but they didn't find any prairie dogs.
Ah.
But we are still gonna have to make sure that if the grass isn't cut after April, then they have to do a nesting study, and I'm like, we'll cut the grass everywhere, so we don't have to do a nesting study, if they're doing construction after April.
This is insane.
Um, anyways, it's just whatever, there is gonna be.
And after April, what's that?
Between April and, like, August, um.
Like, we need alerts on, in our phones, we cannot.
As long as they disturb all of the area.
We have to do a nesting study. Yeah.
Before the, they come out of hibernation, then it's fine, but if there's area that's undisturbed, that has grass in it, and then we go to disturb the grass, now you have to do a nesting study, so, it's fine, we'll, we'll deal with that.
Get all the grass.
All the area is gonna be disturbed by April, because this project is gonna be happening during the winter. Speaking of that, um, they're looking to go out to bid in September, October timeframe, and then, of course, by the time you make the award, and then all that stuff, so it will be a winter project, we are on schedule, we are, I don't even dare say it.
Don't say it.
Don't say it.
Don't say it.
We are maybe gonna be on, on budget. Um, this is a very complex project, as you know, um, change orders can kill you, so far, so good. That's all I'm gonna say.
So they're going with the box concept?
Two box culverts, ten foot high by twenty-six foot wide boxes.
Wow.
Two of them, pour in place, custom. Um, last thing I have is not our news, it's more, um, school district news, but there has been a new principal selected, is it, is it official?
It is official.
Yeah.
One of our own.
Yeah.
We're happy, the school is happy to announce that Tor- Tony, I almost said Tori, Robinson is the new.
Robison.
Robison, that's what I said, you guys heard the N, I didn't say it, she is the new principal of Perrin High School.
High School.
Kim has been.
Her first female principal of Perrin High School.
Kim has been promoted, and Tony, our, 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 our own, Tony has, is the new principal.
And is she the, I need to look, and I think she's the first female.
I looked at the pictures, unless someone didn't get their picture taken at some point back in a long, long, long time ago.
I think she is.
But we'll have to confirm.
And we do, we do a lot of work with the city and the high school, we've worked really hard to have a good relationship, I was really worried they're gonna bring in an outsider, and we were gonna have to fully indoctrinate them again, I was really sad to hear Kim was leaving for that reason, but now it's Tony, so we're happy.
She values, she values community, rec, and history, and heritage, and all those things, so we're excited, it'll be good.
She's, she's great.
Um, I know, I, I was gonna tell you, and I, it was on my list.
You know her?
All right, she's fam- family, I, I would say.
Wait, she's family of Scott, maybe?
Kind of, yeah.
I, I claim the ones that do well, I don't tell you about the others. Only as related.
I'll try to go really fast, guys, um, we had, we had a long meeting today, I don't know why, I feel like it's a big victory, it's, we were just talking about the intersection seventy-five, I don't know why, that one is just eating, eating me up with concern. Um, it was on UDOT's list to study it, and maybe like twenty years or something.
The interchange.
The interchange.
Exit seventy-five.
Yeah, exit seventy-five, um, I'm like, twenty years is soon enough, it just isn't soon enough, and so we have our monthly meetings, or quarterly meetings, with the county and everybody, and, um, they said, we have some contingency money, we might be able to get that, a study done on that, I was so happy that that was even an option for us, um, we had that meeting today with their engineers, the scope, was it scoping meeting? Uh, really liked the engineers, I felt like we did some really good work in there, we were in there for probably about an hour and a half, and I thought that was a great, um, a great point of progress, to have that, that being studied so much earlier than what they headed on to be studied.
Which ones, uh, north or south?
Terrible's, Maverick, Ace.
Why not, we'll just say south, south or north, south.
Fowler, seventy-five, yeah. And we did get confirmation, there will be a Starbucks.
And the Terrible's location.
At the Terrible's location.
Separate building.
Yeah. Um, so, anyway, that, and then, let's see, moving forward on, I don't know if the Zaleskis mentioned it, um, Janelle said, you're not taking his fire or whatever, so I didn't talk during that, but September is when the roof will be replaced, that's so soon, you guys, like, the Old Rock Church. Mm-hmm, yeah, this year, and it's fifty year product.
We awarded the bid. We need to, we need to look at the procurement on the tie-ins to the, to the other, we do have an estimate.
Mm-hmm.
But we haven't officially bid it and awarded it, so.
So what's that gonna do, the front wall?
Nothing at this point.
Nothing.
Nothing yet, but it is definitely next priority.
Cause where they're connect, you know, attaching, I thought maybe they'd work that in.
Yeah, we talked about that, pretty, we had a meeting this week on that as well, and.
The only really thing that'll affect is what it, you call, whatever you call, what I call the crown molding, it's the, the wood that goes between the roof.
Mm-hmm.
Actual plane of the roof and the sidewall, that, that shouldn't even get affected by this, but when we do the front fascia of that, that's gonna have to come off, and at that point, it may affect the, the roof, but.
Yeah.
When you say front face, you mean the front wall, the front, okay.
Um, this is a mind blower for me, but I came last night to the presentation open house that was held, Kim was there as well, um, I would let him share this, but I'll be, I thought it was awful news, really, but it is what it is. So the traffic counts on the road, the Canyon Road to Bryanhead, it, they're about seventy-five hundred, for, for the, for UDOT to a, twenty-seven hundred?
Twenty-seven hundred a day.
Okay, so I transposed and messed it up, but twenty-seven hundred a day, cars.
And you can hold, so if they're twenty-seven thousand.
Can hold twenty-seven thousand, so before they would address that road, that would need to increase to twenty-seven thousand. I learned that last night, and I was just, I sat there, kinda just a little mind blown. Yeah, so bringing that to you guys to, to hear those numbers, um, yes. Oh, very cool. Um, the last thing I'm gonna say is, everyone works really hard at the fair, I know Robyn's lost her mother recently, I know they could use a lot of support, and you can go on, and you can volunteer, and that's gonna be here before we know it, um, so please be aware of the need for our community to support that event, even though, you know, we think about, uh, think of it as the county, that has historically been Perrin who has supported that event, and we've been, who's run it, and taken care of things, and so.
I do the concession.
Yeah, he does the concession, so where you can and how you can, encourage people to get involved, it really is, uh, a beautiful, shining moment for our community to all come together and support that event. And that is all I'm going to share, I could go on and on, and that would just be me.
Mayor, I think you ought to mention the twenty-fourth was very successful, the celebration.
It was ve- it was so successful that my family stood there for a minute, felt like there were too many people there and left.
Yeah, it was very, very successful.
It was packed, yeah. Anything else?
No.
Right, so with that, Kelly, do you have anything? Anyone else who stayed here all night, through the fun? Scott?
I don't.
Nothing, awesome, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, we have no closed session tonight, so with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
We'll make a motion. Oh, Kelly, do you have some? All right, all those in favor?
I.
Okay. All right, motion carries, thank you.
I second it.
Thank you.
I tried, I, cause, I'm glad you were here to fix my numbers, but.
Good job.
Yeah, good job.
Before they'll touch.